We recommend multiple bids, which the Zelkis wisely received before deciding on Center Point Landscaping, one of dozens of certified water smart landscapers that take courses in water efficiency and are approved by the Southern Nevada Water Authority.
So I'll be out meeting with you throughout the whole process, going through every single detail, all the plants, your rock selection, pavers, making sure that we're really getting all the details in order before construction starts.
When it comes to creating the right design, 3D renderings are now standard practice for landscape contractors who can map out anything you may want to add, from fire pits and trees, and look, there's Duke and Leo. It truly gives a glimpse of what's to come and allows you to play with the space.
I lay out everything, pretty much putting together all your asks, and we collaborate. We'll look at the design, we'll make changes, adjustments, and make sure that we're really honing in on what you're looking for.
Oh, yeah. I like these.
So if you want something that's going to be evergreen, that gives you some flowers, it's not a messy plant at all.
Next, picking beautiful plants and trees is where the skeptics begin grumbling. Many believe having a colorful backyard is impossible in our desert, especially without traditional grass or a lot of water. It's not true. The Zelkis say artificial turf has worked out very well for Duke and Leo, and Star Nursery stocks hundreds of plants on SNWA's approved plant list, a comprehensive guide that's tailored for our climate, for anyone looking to change or add to their landscape.
There's a lot to pick from. Where do I start?
I mean, there is lots to look at. We're going to look at pretty much everything I recommend, and then from there, if you want to do some alternatives, we can look at some other options as well.
A mature landscape does take time to build, but opting for the largest size available of the plant or tree you want will trade a little more cost to collapse time.
When they think water smart, they always think cactuses, just barren landscape, and that doesn't need to be the case. You can really find some plants that are going to be nice, full, and lush with our climate by providing shade trees and getting some other plants that sit below it that might otherwise not do well in full sun and really creating an environment that helps other plants thrive.
One last item you must assess is the condition of your irrigation system. Invest in any repairs or upgrades now to avoid a nightmare many experience and could cost even more. Following the playbook the Zelkis did will end with the reward of a refreshed space tailored to your needs and desires, adding shade and color, and knowing you're staying water smart. Discover our list of approved water smart landscapers and/or plant lists at SNWA.com. Lake Mead remains about 30% full and is still under a Tier 1 federal water shortage declaration. This means mandatory cuts to our water supply. However, these are cuts that we can handle because of your conservation. While Lake Mead is a shared resource between three states and Mexico, your diligent conservation, combined with the Southern Nevada Water Authority's infrastructure we showed you earlier in the show, does in fact ensure a reliable water supply in the midst of a lot of uncertainty. And while building a pipeline from the Mississippi River isn't feasible for a variety of reasons, SNWA will continue to find ways and do everything it can to keep as much water in Lake Mead as possible. Thanks for watching Vegas Valley H2O, and thank you for staying water smart.
Keeping you connected for 25 years, you're watching City of Las Vegas TV.
The following program is closed captioned for the hearing impaired.
in the morning when you got home from work, making plans to travel around the world, said we'd always put each other first. Old love songs we used to play too funny, now I hate you. Now I remember when you called me late at night, I give you my hours and advice just trying to fix you and all your daddy issues, but now I don't even miss you anymore. So...
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to your city council meeting. The April 2, 2025 meeting of the city council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded and can be viewed live on City of Las Vegas TV on Cox Cable Channel 2. You could also watch the meeting live online and access other city content by visiting LasVegasNevada.gov/Connect. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on the City of Las Vegas TV Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers, out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anybody that has difficulty with stairs, please check with the marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, please assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card, which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available in the clerk's office or at the rear of our chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizens' participation, or specified public hearing items. If there is anyone present today that has a need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk staff. Please note, if you are parked in the parking garage across the street, a self-validation machine is located in the foyer between city council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter these chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine. If you do not have your ticket, see security personnel while exiting for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by the Reverend Sassoon Zamruktian, Saint Gira-gos Armenian Apostolic Church, and remain standing for the pledge.
Good morning. I want to thank Mayor Shirley Berkeley and the Honorable City Council members for inviting me to open today's session with a prayer. Thank you. I am Father Sassoon Zamruktian, representing the Saint Gira-gos Armenian Apostolic Orthodox Church here in Las Vegas. As you may know, Armenians were the first nation in the world to adopt Christianity in the 4th century. Since then, we have prayed, created, invented, were persecuted, and been victim of horrific genocide by the neighboring countries and people, and yet exist to this day. Today, in Las Vegas, Armenians migrate not only from the neighboring states, but also from their homeland, Armenia, and other countries to pursue the American dream. We thank you for having us as your equals in this city and for allowing us to live next to you for the betterment of the city of Las Vegas. Let us pray. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, O Lord, the fountain of our infinite wisdom, grant the mayor and the city council members the wisdom always to think, speak, and do what is pleasing in your sight and good for the city and its inhabitants. Deliver all of us from evil thoughts, words, deeds. Have mercy upon your creatures and me a manifold sinners. May God richly bless you and your proceedings today and the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And would you please lead us in the pledge?
I will. I pledge...
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic of America.
We will now proceed with the ceremonial portion of our meeting. we usually restrict it to two. But today is a very special time in our city's history, and we all decided that we had to add another ceremonial to our schedule for today. And this is the ceremonial portion of the council agenda. And for our first item, we have a special team of local athletes that the city council wants to recognize. Today, we are joined by the American Collegiate Hockey Association National Champion UNLV Skating Rebels Hockey Team. And I'd like to invite the team and the coaching staff to please join your city council members here at the podium. Oh, now you're talking. You guys are the main event.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Lovely salad bowl. Okay, and where's my coach?
Right here.
Coach? Where are you? Congratulations. All right. I want to congratulate the coach, Anthony Vignary Greener, and all the Skating Rebels for bringing home the program's first national championship. The Rebels avenged last year's championship round loss to Adrian College of Michigan with a decisive 7-3 victory. In this year's final, the UNLV Skating Rebels are a self-funded, nonprofit program that began in 2005. Yes, 2005, when we welcomed our Golden Knights, we already had hockey in the desert with our Rebels. In 2017, the team joined the ACHA Division 1 and has been on an upward trajectory ever since, reaching the pinnacle of college club hockey with this championship. As a UNLV Rebel myself, we...
There are several of them.
Oh, yes. How many Rebels do we have? Well, we're all Rebels. Okay. Woo. So, we are obviously very, very proud of our alma mater. UNLV, over the years, have had many champions to celebrate, but I am very happy to welcome this championship team to the winner's circle, and I am honored, which I left it up there. Can somebody get the proclamation? The main event. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. We have a proclamation for you from the entire city council, because we're also very proud of you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. On behalf of the entire city council, because this was a joint effort from all of us, and we were all very excited to be able to do this, I want to present a proclamation to the UNLV Skating Rebels National Championship Team and proclaim April 2, 2025 as the UNLV Skating Rebels National Championship Day. Congratulations. I'm honored to present this proclamation, but before I do, Coach, would you say a few words? And then if you would like to introduce the assistant captain to say a few words as well, we'd be delighted to hear what you have to say, and we're all very, very proud of you. All right, there you go.
Well, it's an honor to be here. We appreciate it. It's been a long road, 10 years. Coach Nick and myself, Coach CR have been at it, but it's been worth it. They deserve everything they've got this year. They worked hard from August all the way till a couple weeks ago, and we can't thank you guys enough for this. So I'll pass this on to Preston Broziak.
Yeah, we just wanted to say on behalf of all the guys in UNLV Hockey, we're honored to be here. Thank you guys so much. We couldn't have done it without the City of Las Vegas and all the fan support. So hopefully every year on April 2, UNLV Hockey can come in here with the trophy. So, thank you.
Wow. This is very cool. And if I could ask everybody to join us at the front of the podium, we will give you the proclamation and take some great pictures. All right, let's do this. Yes. Well, I don't think I can, but you can.
No, no, no.
Okay.
And we need the city council members to be part of this.
Yes, we'll squeeze in.
Hey, you guys need to get...
Squish up, we're good.
Can you sit down there?
I'm just trying to...
We're gonna go in three, two, and one. I'm gonna take a couple more. We'll go in three, two, and one. One more. Three, two, one. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Let me give them a round of applause.
Congratulations. I appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations. Well done. Make her represent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job.
Nice job.
Come back next year.
Our next item, I have the pleasure of recognizing our Citizen of the Month. Please join me
in welcoming a true community partner, Mr. Andy Armenian. Right there. Lovely. Oh, I just love this man. Andy moved to... Where are you? Oh, there you are. Okay. Andy moved to Las Vegas in 2005 and quickly became actively involved in the Las Vegas Armenian-American community, as well as the entire community writ large. Born in Beirut, Lebanon, Andy immigrated to the United States in 1976 to continue his studies at Northeastern University in Boston. Later, he worked for Procter &amp; Gamble in sales and marketing, where he was able to travel the world before deciding Las Vegas is the best place to be. I could not agree with him more. Since arriving in Las Vegas, Andy has managed a thriving family real estate business. He's always had a passion for his heritage and was instrumental in the construction of the Armenian Church. It was the first Armenian church built and consecrated in the state Nevada in 2013, and I had the honor of being there for the consecration. It's absolutely breathtakingly beautiful church. Andy has served as the honorary counsel of the Republic of Armenia in Las Vegas and serves as a member of the city's Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Andy, thank you for all you do for our community. It's my pleasure to name you the City of Las Vegas April 2025 Citizen of the Month, and it gives me personal pleasure, and I know a number of our city council people have worked with you. They know you well and appreciate what you have done for this community and for the Armenian community. Very important that nobody ever forgets, so that our history doesn't repeat itself, and you are certainly emblematic of that belief. And I thank you for your friendship and for all you do for the City of Las Vegas. It's a pleasure.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And may I ask you to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. We all know Las Vegas is a diverse and cosmopolitan city. At any point in time, more than 30 different languages are spoken in Las Vegas, and 30 different ethnic groups call Las Vegas proudly our home. My family settled here in 2005, but according to UNLV History Department research, Armenian families settled in Southern Nevada as early as 1911, and that is based on school records where they have names of Armenian kids attending school. Several Armenians have played an important role in the growth of Southern Nevada, mainly MGM Casino mogul Kirke Corian, and lately we have named the UNLV School of Medicine after him. Jerry Tarkanian, UNLV legendary basketball coach, and his late wife, Lois Tarkanian, who was a member of the council here. Legendary tennis player Andre Agassi and his family, as well as casino executive Alex Yemeniyan, just to name a few. The month of April unfortunately is full of tragic history or memories for the Armenian communities worldwide, because we remember 1.5 million Armenian victims during the Armenian genocide, which took place in 1915 under the cover of the World War I. In conclusion, Madam Mayor, I would like to thank you for this wonderful honor, and I would like to accept this on behalf of my family and the Las Vegas Armenian-American community. Thank you so much.
I was just going to invite them up. Would you mind, may I invite our clergy to please join us?
Yeah.
We are so very happy that you have come today. Is your family here?
Yes.
Would you like to invite them up? I know, I see them.
Yeah. Mom?
Yes, please.
Better.
And now everybody... No, I'm...
No.
Yes, right next to him. Okay. Yes, oh, yes.
Thank you.
Why are you doing that?
I'm telling it.
Why are you doing that?
We will go in three, two, and one. One more. We'll go in three, two, and one. One more. Three, two, and one. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was a pleasure.
I hope to see you soon.
Bigger font.
Always.
It's going to be the...
Are you ready?
some achievements by Clark County School District students in her ward. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a wonderful day here in the City of Las Vegas, as we are definitely elevating all of the excellence within our community. Obviously, we had our UNLV champions here with their cup. We had the distinction of Mr. Armenian as our Citizen of the Month, and I couldn't be more ecstatic or thrilled to recognize excellence in Ward 3. The first part of my ceremonial will be inviting Sunrise Acres Elementary School's flag football team, and if they can make it all down here, and I'll explain why they're part of today's ceremonials. As a young child... Now, all the attention will be on the cheerleaders, because they're so cute. But it's okay. As a young child, it is so important that we celebrate every milestone they accomplish, and it's so important that they have opportunities to excel and to find a passion that drives their focus, not just in a sport or in mariachi or in hockey, but it really is so that they can be the best version of themselves. And I remember being a young Jaguar back in the day, because that's my alma mater for elementary school. Believe it or not, I went to Sunrise Acres. And I remember as a child, these activities are so instrumental in making sure that we're equipped with the skills that we'll need in the future for our work life. And you learn through the losses and the wins what it is to be a team, how you all come together to make magic happen. And look at this. You work so hard that you are the flag football team champions this year for 2024. Let's hear it for Sunrise Acres. I definitely want them to know that we, as a community, are so proud. We're always behind our youth. I think that in today's world, it's hard to see people who are rooting for you, who are cheering you on and telling you to be the best you you can be, and that's why I wanted to bring you here today, because I want you to know that the mayor and this council is all behind you, like your families, like your principals, like your teachers, every day in your school. I want to just share a little bit about this season. These talented players gave their all to finish the season 10-0 undefeated to win. Let's hear it for Sunrise Acres. I definitely want them to know that we, as a community, are so proud. We're always behind our youth. I think that in today's world, it's hard to see people who are rooting for you, who are cheering you on and telling you to be the best you you can be, and that's why I wanted to bring you here today, because I want you to know that the mayor and this council is all behind you, like your families, like your principals, like your teachers, every day in your school. I want to just share a little bit about this season. These talented players gave their all to finish the season 10-0 undefeated to win. The Las Vegas Raiders sponsored 2024 Silver and Black Citywide Championship against democracy prep. Sorry, Councilwoman. You heard that right. The Jaguars won every single one of their games, much like in the NFL. The Silver and Black Citywide Championship involved the winners of two separate leagues that essentially operated as two different conferences. The Eastside School League consisted of 143 competing players amongst 12 schools. Seven of the 12 teams who competed in the Eastside Schools League were public schools within Ward Three: Gambedo, Gregson, Hewitson, Lunt, Park, Rono, and Sunrise Acres. Coaches Austin Shannon, I'm going to butcher some last names, so apologize in advance, Dawn Adazic, thank you for helping me out, and Lisa Accord led these incredible players through each game. Thank you, coaches, for believing and challenging your players throughout the entire season. Your mentorship is instrumental in them being able to be the champions of the league. So let's hear it for the coaches, we need those mentors. One of the most important lessons that the coaches taught our Jaguars this season was that success wasn't just about talent, it was about dedication, respect, and the willingness to push through adversity. Boy, oh, boy, do we need this more than ever. These are lessons that will carry these youth through future championship and their lives. Jaguars, please remember these wise words from your coaches always. And as I mentioned previously to the Stella... Let me see. Congratulations Jaguars, kudos to you for all your hard work, teamwork, and sportsmanship. A big thank you to your coaches for helping lead you to this victory, and to your cheerleaders. You can't have a football team without the cheerleaders who believed and cheered for you guys every step of the way. I'd also like to take a moment to thank our municipal sports unit in the City of Las Vegas, Philip Payne, for being the spark that led to the formation of this amazing unbeatable team. Thank you, Philip, for knowing where the need is great and doing something to heed the call and giving this youth the opportunity to partake in an amazing sport. And so with that, I'm going to turn over the mic to the principal of my beloved elementary school alma mater Sunrise Acres, to Nicole Baumgartner.
Thank you so much. These kids have done an incredible job, and like you said, not only their hard work and dedication led them to an undefeated season, but also the cheerleaders being there and cheering them on also gave them the encouragement when they needed it the most and when they were down. And to the coaches, I couldn't ask for any better mentors for my football players or my cheerleaders, so thank you so much for also your dedication.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Baumgartner, and I just wanted to show off every single cheerleader and student and coach, I hope, and hopefully principal received a certificate that basically acknowledges their achievement, signed by the mayor and myself. So look how beautiful it is, and every single one of them got one. All right, we're going to go ahead and take a picture with this group, and then I'll bring my final group for recognition. Now, I think we have a little something for them in the Now Cafe After Recognitions, so, yes. They've worked hard, they deserve a little bit of praise and love poured back into them. For the next ceremonial, I couldn't be prouder to recognize students from the Mariachi Los Pumas program at KO Knutzen Middle School. If they can come up here, please, and let's give them a huge round of applause. They were playing for us earlier out in the lobby. Come on down. We'll have about half of you come on this side and half of you come on this side, and if Director Johnny Gonzalez can stay here close to the podium, that'd be amazing. And the principal. All of the KO Knutzen Pumas family, come on down. So, if you guys haven't heard the Los Pumas, I highly recommend you guys check them out at an upcoming mariachi festival or wherever they're going to be. I know that these youth are going places because they're already demonstrating the, just the level of music that they've achieved so far. Under the leadership of Mr. Johnny Gonzalez, Ms. Jasmine Dueñas, and sectional directors, Mr. Hector Aguilar and Rocío González, KO's Knutzens Mariachi Los Pumas were recognized as the national champions at the 30th Annual Mariachi Extravaganza held in San Antonio, Texas last December. This prestigious competition, also known as the Super Bowl of mariachi music, included participation of 1,200 middle, high school, college, and university musicians from across the country. Mariachi Los Pumas won first place in this National Mariachi Group Middle School category, beating four other groups, including Monaco Middle School's Mariachi Los Gavilanés, who placed third. But Las Vegas is definitely being represented. Mariachi Los Pumas also won Best Middle School Violin Section and Armonía Section. Del Sol Academy of the Performing Arts Mariachi Encendido and Las Vegas High Schools Mariachi Joya also deserve an honorable mention for being finalists in the National Mariachi Group High School category. The extravaganza was so successful that a follow-up extravaganza was produced here in Las Vegas at UNLV for the first time last month. KO Knutzen's Middle School scored big again, solidifying another first-place win in group competition middle school category, Best Middle School Vocals and Armonía Sections. In the vocal competition middle school category, Carla Beltran Delgado earned third place. Go Carla. She also placed, I believe, third at the national competition too, yes? Or not that high? Okay, but it helped you get to third place here locally. Las Vegas was proudly represented with a second-place win in the vocal competition college/university category by Joseline Gutierrez, and a third-place win by Las Vegas High School Mariachi Joya in the group competition high school category. Mariachi Pumas, it is an honor to recognize you here today, your contributions, not just for musical landscape of Las Vegas, but for giving your heart and soul into a project you believe in, and that is so important. In 2011, UNESCO recognized mariachi music as an intangible cultural heritage of humanity, acknowledging its role as a vital part of the Mexican culture passed down through generations and celebrated in festive events. Music is a universal language, music is culture, and I thank you all for not only having that passion but excelling in it. I know how difficult it must be to balance your schoolwork and your home life with all the time that you have to dedicate to being the best mariachi element you can be. So each and every one of you, congratulations, felicidades, bien hecho, adelante, sigan tocando esa música hermosa para el deleite de todos. I want to thank the parents also, who many of them couldn't make today, but I know a few are here, and I know without the support and encouragement of our parents, the teachers can't make this magic work. They need to have that bridge between the home and the school. And so I'm going to congratulate you all and pass on the mic to the amazing and talented Johnny Gonzalez, so he can share what this journey has been for him as their instructional director.
Thank you so much. First of all, I just want to thank the City of Las Vegas for inviting us today and celebrating our accomplishments this year. This year marks the 20th anniversary of the mariachi program here at KO Knutzen Academy of the Arts, and what an amazing year it has been for our students and us, the directors, myself, Ms. Dueñas, our amazing principal, Mr. Bache, Hector, our instructional assistant, and my wife Rocío González in the back. Lots of hard work goes into what we do with the students, and we are a big team supported by our parents and our community. So I just want to thank everybody for all your support, and we hope that we can continue showing our culture and our tradition to this beautiful community here in Las Vegas. So thank you so much.
And some words from Principal Harold Bache. What does it mean to be the principal at KO Knutzen and have them winning competition after competition, and you get to see those trophies coming through the halls of your school?
No, it's absolutely amazing. Hello, everyone, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, we appreciate you for inviting us and honoring these amazing students. They continue to make us proud at KO Knutzen Academy of the Arts. They are a wonderful representation of the talent that we have in our, at our school and in our greater community in Las Vegas, Nevada. They make us proud every day. They are the embodiment of grace and humbleness, but also professionalism. They are amazing and are great models for what our students are at KO Knutzen. So thank you again for this honor.
And I would be remiss if I didn't thank our fabulous YDSI department for helping us coalesce as a community and rally behind our schoolchildren, elementary, middle, and UNLV. We didn't take a part in transporting UNLV, but we did make sure that these students had a way to get here from their schools. So thank you, YDSI, Dr. Malich, and your phenomenal team there for all of your assistance. Let's give them a round of applause. And last but not least, the mayor has a request. Can she hear you all? And so Director Gonzalez, what are you going to have them play? And if I could invite my colleagues to sit in the front row so that we can hear how wonderful they really do play.
Do you need someone to have the mic?
Sure, I'll take it and then I'll just pass it around. There's four, two lines, so slide over. Not this. Let's come this way. Your head's a little too...
We're going to go ahead and take our picture. We didn't take our group picture, so we'll just weave ourselves in as council members along the, amongst the mariachi group here, and... And do we have also the, do we have everyone from the school come back in? Make sure you're here too. Okay, if you're... Gracias, mariachi los pumas. Thank you so much for making the time, and Las Vegas is the entertainment capital of the world, and the future definitely is bright for us, Mayor.
I can't think of a better way to start our meeting. It's a pleasure, thank you, congratulations.
Agenda item 18, for possible action to approve award of modification number one to contract number 240082-SK Las Vegas Arts District Business Improvement District, located in the areas bounded by Wyoming Avenue on the south, Las Vegas Boulevard on the east, Gas Avenue on the north, and Union Pacific Railroad on the west. Department of Economic and Urban Development Award recommended to Centro, Inc. Increase amount not to exceed $37,500. General Capital Projects Fund, Ward three, Ms. Diaz. Yes, would you care to, well, before we do, did you want to say something?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I wanted it pulled off with consent because my office has been receiving questions about where we are with the bid process, what does this agenda item mean, and I think that just in full transparency, I wanted Ms. Babski to basically give us a briefing about where we are in the process and how much more work still has to be done, and that we as a council ultimately don't have a say in whether the bid moves forward or not. It really is up to that area and the property owners. So Ms. Babski, if you could just bring us up to speed with what we're renewing here and the work that still lies ahead and to continue to consider if a business improvement district for the arts district is something that everyone wants to buy into and thinks is the best foot forward.
Ms. Babski.
Good morning, Mayor, good morning, City Council. Dina Babski, Director of Economic and Urban Development for the city. So just for a little background, we did have a contract with Centro last year. This consultant was hired to help with the exploration of a possibility of establishing a bid, a business improvement district in the arts district. Throughout the year, the consultant engaged with the local stakeholders, had conversations, and explored the, you know, the interests and potential feasibility. Unfortunately, at the end of last year, the contract expired, and it took us a few, a few, or a couple of months to get it back on council agenda, and this particular amendment is adding additional funding, $37,500 for the consultant to pick up where the work was left off in December. And where they are in the process is over the next couple of months, the consultant is going to continue to meet with the bid steering committee that was established last year to explore the operational framework for a potential bid. And then if, you know, if there is support throughout the community, then they will start the surveying and the petitioning. So the property owners within the bid will have the opportunity to either support or not support by signing the petition. If they do achieve over 50% of overall property owner and assessed value supporting the bid, then at that time, they will bring forward for your consideration a petition for the establishment of it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that we're not the ones in driving this. It's really the community, and the community will let us know whether they think we need to move forward or not. But just wanted to articulate, we did hire Ms. Gallus because she's been instrumental in establishing about 75 bids across the country, and she does have the subject matter expertise that would guide and facilitate, I think, thoughtful conversations around this concept. So thank you for allowing me to pull it off consent to clarify.
I appreciate that and being able to explain further how the process works. Are there any questions or comments from the council members? Seeing none, is there a motion, Councilwoman Diaz?
I'll move to approve Agenda item 18.
Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion carries, and thank you very much, Ms. Babski. Agenda item 23, this is a public hearing on local improvement district for special improvement district number 1485, Alter Drive Landscape Maintenance for the year 2026. This is Ward one, Mr. Knudsen. This is a public hearing which I now declare open. Please identify yourself for the record.
Thank you, and good morning, Mayor and Council. I am Zalal Alamu, Engineering Project Manager with the Department of Public Works for the Record. This item is concerning special improvement district 1485, Alter Drive Landscape Maintenance. SID 1485 consists of 37 properties along Alter Drive between Rancho Drive and approximately 275 feet west of Lacy Lane in Ward one. District covers the annual cost of landscape maintenance, utility services, and planned nutrition for the period between July 1st, 2025, and June 30th, 2026. It is renewed annually, and the assessment for the period totals $118,050, which is paid 100% by the property owners. No written protests have been filed in the city clerk's office, and this concludes the report for SID 1485.
Thank you so much. This is a public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, are there any comments from the members of the city council? Seeing none, is there anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. This was a public hearing only, and no action is required. We will move to the next item, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll just stay up there. Saves a lot of legwork, I know. Agenda item number 24, this is a public hearing on local improvement district for special improvement district number 1516 Fremont Street Maintenance District for the year 2026, Las Vegas Boulevard to Eighth Street. This is in Ward five, Ms. Diaz. This is a public hearing that I now declare open. Would you care to identify yourself again?
Once again, Mayor and Council, I am Zalal Alamu, Engineering Project Manager with the Department of Public Works for the Record. This item is concerning special improvement district 1516 Fremont East Entertainment District Maintenance. SID 1516 consists of 32 parcels bounded by Las Vegas Boulevard to the west, Ogden Avenue to the north, Carson Avenue to the south, and Eighth Street to the east in Ward three. The district covers the annual cost of landscape maintenance, street cleaning, public utilities, promotional events, and marketing for the period between July 1st, 2025, and June 30, 2026. It is renewed annually, and upon close coordination with the Fremont East District Board, there will be no assessments this year due to sufficient reserves to cover the expected expenses. The SID is paid 100% by the property owners. No written protests have been filed with the city clerk's office, and this concludes the report for SID 1516.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the city council members? Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. This was a public hearing only, and no action is required. We'll move to the next item. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 25, this item will be trailed and heard subsequent to the Community Development Discussion Section of the Agenda. Agenda item number 26, Resolutions. R-21-2025, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Approving a Cooperative Grant Agreement Between the City of Las Vegas and City Parkway Five, Inc., and Providing for Other Matters Related There Too for Purposes of the Property Located at 320 South Ninth Street, Commonly Known as the Strong Start Academy Elementary School as a Tony Hsieh Education Center, and Ratification of Related Actions by the City, Its Officers, and Employees Not to Exceed $6,352, $200. General Capital Fund Project, Ward three, Ms. Diaz. Note, this item is related to Council Item Number 27, R-22-2025. Ms. Babski.
Yes, good morning, Mayor, good morning, City Council Members. Dina Babski, Director of Economic and Urban Development. So before I move on to the actual description of the project, I'd like to provide a little bit of the background on the New Market Tax Credits Program in general.
Thank you.
As well as the Las Vegas Community Investment Corporation history, because we've been working with the organization for over 12 years now, and I think it's important for our community to know. So the New Market Tax Credit Program was actually created by Congress back in 2000 as part of the Community Renewal Tax Relief Act. It has been very successful across our country. Many projects, community projects, have been beneficial specifically for our low-income underserved communities. The main goal of the program is to attract private investment into the communities that have historically been disinvested from. So essentially, the private investors can gain on a tax credit on their federal income taxes if they invest their funds into such projects. And over a period of seven years, they can realize the tax credit year after year. And the unique and great part about this program is that the money cannot be pulled out sooner, so that really makes it very important and very effective for us to be able to deliver on these community projects. So who can apply for the New Market Tax Credits? It is certified, I'm sorry, the CDEs, which LVCIC is one of them. It takes a little bit, a few criteria to be able to meet those requirements. The specific mission of such an entity has to be to provide investment capital for low-income communities or low-income persons. They also have to hold these, these projects responsible for job creation and things of that nature to make sure that the projects deliver on their original goals. Another great, unique portion of the, of CDEs is that it has to have an advisory board that has to be at least 20% represented by the local community members of those communities. So we do have such an advisory board, and they're very engaged, and I'll be happy to share with you who these members are. LVCIC was established, as I mentioned, back in 2012. It was certified by CDFI, and that was the first year we were able to apply for the market tax credits, and we were successful. Starting in the year 2013, for the next four following years, LVCIC received allocations totaling to $128 million in new market tax credits. With those funds, we were able to deliver on 10 great community projects. Seven of these have already been closed down, meaning that the seven-year compliance period I mentioned earlier has ended. Three remaining ones at the bottom, we are in our last year of compliance, so after this year, we'll close down on them as well. I would be remiss not to mention that last year, we received the largest allocation ever of $60 million. We did have a few years in between 2018 and 2024 where we unfortunately didn't and weren't successful, but it was great news for us to receive last year's allocation, and we're currently in the process of working with the few projects in our pipeline, which you will be seeing coming before you for approval, and today is going to be one of them. So how does LVCIC evaluate projects to be added to our pipeline? There's a few different requirements by CDFI and the Treasury Department, as well as our own LVCIC parameters that have been in place for years for the projects to have to meet in order to be part of the program. CDFI does require that we work in the areas that are deemed severely distressed by the U.S. Census Track, so that's our area of operation. We have been focused for the last 13 years on specific business type, which are community facilities. Under CDFI rules, other business types are also eligible, but because we have been so successful on delivering on the community facilities, we are, this is the core of our program, and this is what we normally focus on. The approval process for just about any transaction that takes place within LVCIC is pretty stringent. There's two different boards that are involved. As I mentioned, there's Advisory Board that consists of the community members and leaders, and then there's the Governance Board that kind of manages the overall operations. When we apply for New Market Tax Credits, when we prepare applications, when we review our pipeline and have new proposed projects, we take it to both boards. We go through approval of the Advisory Board, and then we consult with the Advisory Board, and then get the formal approval from the Governance Board. Similarly, with every single deal that we close on a new project, it's exactly the same route, Advisory Board, and then the Governance Board, so everything stays in order. Our Advisory Board, as I mentioned, has great community leaders. You can see that, you know, some of the names are well, well-known in our community, and this board normally meets quarterly generally, but then again, when we have things like new projects, new deals, we call them, they come to engage with us, provide their guidance, and off we go. So now the project. Today before you are two items related to our very first allocation of the $60 million award last year. It is Strong Start Academy Elementary School at the Tony Hsieh Education Center Expansion. It is located at 320 South Ninth Street, Las Vegas, and again, it is related to items 26 and 27. We're well familiar with this beautiful, beautiful building at the corner of Ninth and Bridger, the Tony Hsieh Education Center that currently has the charter school in it. So the project was, or is, to build a new bill, additional building that will have nine classrooms, and essentially, you know, will provide additional space for more students to come and get the great education that the charter school provides. These are some of the elevations for the new proposed building, total of 9,500 square feet. As you see that, you know, it's going to be a great addition to the current campus, same style, a lot, a little bit more modern, I guess, on the interior, but again, it's, we're very excited to be part of this. So, you know, towards the, now I'm going to kind of go over the deal details, how this is going to be funded. The overall project cost is 8.7 million, 9 million in new market tax credits, again, because there's certain fees associated, but LVCIC will transfer $9 million to, towards the project, which U.S. Bank is going to purchase. So U.S. Bank is our investor in this case. And then through the, and new market tax credit, the way the new market tax credits flow through all of the different transactions that take place, essentially, the project funding from LVCIC is going to be $2,377,800 in cash. That will result, at the time of the closure, of 1.4 million in reimbursement for costs that have already been expended on the project. And when all the transactions are complete and we close on the deal, that's when the compliance period for seven years starts. So essentially, you know, for the next seven years, we'll be reporting, monitoring, and making sure that everything goes as planned. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Mayor, Jeff Dorcak, City Attorney. If you'd like, based on Director Babski's presentation, why don't you go ahead and read item 27 into the record, and then we can take the motions back to back on 26 and 27?
I was just thinking the same thing. Agenda item 27, I'll read it now. R-22-2025, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution and Delivery of Transaction Documents for Allocation of New Markets Tax Credits from Las Vegas Community Investment Corporation to LVCIC Sub-CD-E12 LLC for the Purpose of Expanding and Operating the Property Located at 320 South Ninth Street, Commonly Known as the Strong Start Academy Elementary School at the Tony Hsieh Educational Center, and Ratification of Related Actions by the City of Las Vegas, Its Officers and Employees in Ward three, Ms. Diaz. This item is related to Council Item 26, R-21-2025. And taken together, well, let me ask this, are there any questions on item 27 that any of the council members would like to address? Seeing none, is there a motion, Councilwoman Diaz, for items number 26 and 27?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move to approve Agenda item 26.
Shall we vote on the motion? Please, we'll wait for you so you could record.
It's done.
Good, all right.
And I'll move to approve Agenda item 27.
That item passed, by the way. All right, is, thank you for your motion. Shall we vote on the motion for 27? Please post. Item passes. Thank you so much, Ms. Babski. Agenda item 28, Boards and Commissions. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Marilyn Booker to the Audit Oversight Committee. Mr. Brendan Gawne resigned, leaving a vacancy on the board for a community member, and Ms. Booker is eligible and wishes to serve. I move to approve the appointment. Shall we vote on the motion? Item carries. Agenda item number 29, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Brittany Fiedler to the Las Vegas Clark County Library District Board of Trustees. Aran Z, oh, forgive me for this, Aran Zazu, he menaces term expires on April 7th, 2025. Ward three is recommending the appointment of Ms. Fiedler, who is eligible and wishes to be appointed. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Diaz?
Yes, I enthusiastically move to approve the appointment of my constituent Brittany Fiedler, who's out in the audience, waiting to be voted in on this board, and I think she's going to bring so much amazing value to the conversation. So I move to approve Agenda item 29.
Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion passes. And would you please stand up so we can acknowledge you? Agenda item number 30, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Elizabeth Voight to the Las Vegas Clark County Library District Board of Trustees. Jennifer Jerron's term expires on April 18th, 2025. I am recommending the appointment of Ms. Voight, who is eligible and wishes to be appointed. I move to approve the appointment. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion carries. And Elizabeth, would you please stand up so we can acknowledge you? I'm absolutely delighted to be able to appoint you. I know what a remarkable job you have done on the board in the past, and there was a tremendous move to keep you on that library board, so thank you for everything you do for all of us. Agenda item 31, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Kate Turner Whitley to the Las Vegas Clark County Library District Board of Trustees. Ms. Whitley was originally nominated by Mayor Pro Tem, and council appointed her in 2021. That term expires on April 18th. Ms. Turner Whitley is eligible and wishes to be reappointed. Is there a motion, Councilman Knudsen?
Yes, Mayor, I'm equally as enthusiastic as you are, so I will move to approve.
Shall we vote on the motion? Motion passes. Is she here by any chance? All right. We're going to item 32, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Linda Young to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board as the mayor's appointee. A vacancy exists on the board due to the term expiration of the mayor's previous representative, Elizabeth Pataretu. Ms. Young is eligible and wishes to be appointed, so I move to approve the appointment. Shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries. And do I see Linda here? I don't. I have known Linda Young for as many years as I can remember. I think she's going to do a remarkably good job, as she does with every position that she has ever had in this community, and I'm very delighted to have been able to make that appointment. Agenda item 33, Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting. Bill Number 2025-1. Councilman Knudsen, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2025-1, an ordinance to amend LVMC Title II by adding a new chapter therein designated as Chapter 2.70 to establish the Youth Leadership Advisory Council and to provide for other related matters.
Okay. Councilman Knudsen, would you care to make the motion?
Madam Mayor, that was moved out of recommending with two to one, with no recommendations, so I will turn it over to the bill sponsor to make the motion, I think. There's multiple bill sponsors, so I'm looking around.
So who do you want to?
I'm happy to do so unless you guys want to.
I'm happy to defer to the ladies to left.
To, oh, to Ms. Diaz? All right. Councilwoman.
So I look to my left and my right, and they're saying, well, you're listed first, so you're it. So I'm like, okay, I'll take, I'll take the honor. After an amazing ceremonial with a lot of youth involved in those ceremonials, I just think that this is such an instrumental ordinance to help ensure that we, the city, are forming and educating our youth to participate in their local government, to tell them, to tell us how we may be missing the mark from their view, because they're, the way they're growing up is completely different than the way I grew up, and I need to understand in order for me to make the best decisions moving forward, what I may be missing that I'm not experiencing. And I just think that a city is more homogeneous the more we hear from everyone. I also think that it would be, it's going to make an amazing impact, and just giving the city more exposure to our youth, and hopefully have internships blossom from them participating on this advisory council. I know that many of our senior staff started when they were in their teens here in the city, and then now they're at the director level. So I just feel like the future is so bright by establishing this advisory council, exposing them to how city government works, and then hopefully opening the door and their minds to the possibilities here with the city of Las Vegas. So with that, I would love, yes, go ahead. I guess there's further discussion before I make the motion.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak on the city council? Yes, please.
So, you know, I am going to be a no on this, and as the people came up in public comment and spoke, I find it very hypocritical of this council that decided that we didn't have the time and the resources for an advisory council, it was a waste of time, to put together an animal advisory, and yet we're putting together a youth advisory a month later, which is really not in our purview. There are so many groups out there that do this, so I am going to be a no on this.
Would anybody else care to speak? Yes, Mr. Knudsen, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the bill sponsors. I think you put a lot of effort into creating this, and I have a youth intern that's actually going to be starting with my office this summer, who's going to be planning out how we select our participants, and so I'm fully engaged and look forward to participating.
And then also, Madam Mayor, if I could clarify, I like accuracy and representation to be factual, and I believe that this has nothing to do with a prior ordinance. This was something that my other two council colleagues, we conceived this back in '24, and we had not really basically put it together until recently. And so the conception and the idea for wanting to have an opportunity for our youth to partake in this type of a council didn't just happen a few months ago or a few weeks ago. It did happen actually more like a year ago, and we're barely coming through with all of the motions and fruition and putting everything together, so that we did make sure that we didn't need extra funds to expend to run this council. It took a lot of vetting, a lot of analyzing models, until we were able to bring this iteration of the ordinance. So I just wanted to make sure that was crystal clear. This is not something that was done in retaliation. This was not something done to stick it to another council member, but it was done out of the need to expose our youth to opportunities of leadership, and also to help form them and give them things for their resume and life opportunities that so many of my constituents don't have. I live in an area of town that my students' parents don't have a lot of connections, don't have a lot of folks in an executive kind of world, and they don't know about how city government works. So for my, for the children, like my students from Sunrise Acres, like the kids that go to K O Knudsen, they may be first generation here, and they need to understand our processes, and they need to know that being engaged and speaking up early is a really awesome thing, and that they should be partaking in how we function here as a city government. So with that, I'm going to move to approve Agenda item.
I'd like to make a comment. I never, ever in my statement said this was about retaliation. I don't believe.
I think this is totally irrelevant and embarrassing for the city council.
Well, no, I'm going to make the comment that that was not my statement. My statement was very simple, that we use excuses for other, you know, committees about costs, but then we put forth other ones. It was never about retaliation.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. I would say that they are completely separate items, that we care very much for animals. The reason that your ordinance was voted down is because we thought there was a better, more inclusive. more inclusive and substantive way of dealing with the situation we have with animals. Having said that, can we please complete your motion?
So, Mr. Dorkack, do I just say I move to approve the ordinance, or do I need to state other language in my motion?
That's good. The ordinance or the agenda item, which is 33.
I move to approve the agenda item 33 that establishes the Youth Leadership Advisory Council here in the city of Las Vegas.
And shall we vote on this motion? Please post. Motion passes six to one. Agenda item 34, New Bills. Item 34, Bill 2025-2, will be heard at the Recommending Committee meeting on Monday, April 14, 2025. City Attorney, would you please read the new bill?
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number 2025-2, an ordinance to amend the Title 19 Land Use Tables Regarding Various Uses to Correct Drafting Errors Regarding Those Uses That Were Made, an Ordinance Number 6876, adopted last year, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. New Bill 2025-2 is assigned to the April 14, 2025, Recommending Committee members Councilman Knutson and Councilwoman Seaman and Polensky. If any so designated are unable to attend, the Clerk's Office will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at my direction. Thank you so much. Agenda item 35. Items 35 and 36 are on the consent agenda, but I understand Councilwoman Summers Armstrong would like item 35 pulled for discussion. Item 36 is considered to be routine and is recommended for approval by the Department of Community Development. Mayor Protem, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve 36, and then 35 is being pulled off?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So 36.
Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion carries. Agenda item 35. 25-0033, a bayance item on the following land use entitlement project requests on .61 acres at 5200 Vegas Drive, C1 Limited Commercial Zone. Item 35A, 25-033E0T1, a bayance item to allow existing 10-foot-tall perimeter walls where 8 feet is the maximum allowed. Item 35B, 25-0033-EOT2, a bayance item for an approved two-story, 3,073-square-foot addition to an existing single-story, 1,548-square-foot building maintenance service and sales development, and for existing walls and fences to include razor wire. The applicant owner is Buenos Aires Air Conditioning and Heating, Inc. Staff recommends approval on the land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 5. Ms. Summers Armstrong, is the applicant present?
The applicant is not, but I am Renee Rollin, here representing Carlos Ave Maria.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about your project?
Yes. It's an existing small business owner that has had this business for many, many years there in that ward, and it's an existing home that had been converted into a business. He now wants to expand it, because as the business has expanded, he needs it. He'd like to hire some additional employees and does not have the space for them currently. So hence the, not only addition to the one-story building, but to add a second story to said building. I believe all the parking requirements are met based on what the title code requires, and we've had just some setbacks with building department and getting approvals from some shade structures he had constructed and getting those permitted, but it's super close, so we need this extension of time to just be able to move forward with the building permits.
Thank you so much. May I have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Peter Lowenstein for the record. So these are the first extension of time requests for the originally approved variance and site development plan review approvals, and the conditions in the area have maintained no significant changes since that approval time, and the applicant is in the building permit process, so staff is recommending approval of their requested extension. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and I'm assuming that the applicant agrees to all of the conditions?
Correct.
I appreciate that. Are there any questions and comments from council? Ms. Summers Armstrong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much, Ms. Nolan, for coming to meet with me on the 20th. My staff, Kelly Woods, and I went and did a site visit on the 26th, and had an opportunity to meet some of the staff, and had a phone conversation with Mr. Ave Maria, and made it clear that some of the open code enforcement issues still need to be addressed. And so I am not comfortable with the razor wire staying in place, so I would like to propose that you all have 90 days to remove the razor wire and get permitting for the height adjustment to the wall, maximum 10 feet, to include a combination of CMU or candy hooks, whatever they're called. So you, 90 days for that. And the side gate where the additional parking that is required was closed when we were there that time, as well as when staff visited previously, and that is required parking. So that gate needs to be open during business hours, and I think you need to stripe it also so that people are clear about it. And there's a significant amount of supplies that are blocking that parking. I think that needs to be addressed, as well as improvement to the garbage structure. There was a lot of garbage flying around. I spoke to Mr. Ave Maria about that, and I think that needs to be addressed and had been mentioned to you all before. You said you're close on the shade structures. They haven't been done yet?
Yes, those in the building, there's one last item they needed to review, which was the submittal for the stairs of the interior building and the trust documents.
The last thing I would say is that I think a year for you all's planning, your permitting, would be sufficient. When we were inside the building, there had been work already begun, and I'm not an inspector, but I did witness some things that gave me concern, and I spoke to Mr. Ave Maria about the wall that had been taken down, and there was conduit with wiring. And so I think that you all started and stopped, and so I think we need to get that cleared up for safety purposes. So I think one year instead of two for your extension, for you all to get your permitting in place. I'm excited for the expansion of the business. We love having businesses in our ward. They provide jobs for our constituents, and I'm excited to have you all there. I just think that we need to bring some of these things into compliance, so that we are not only presenting the business beautifully in the, in the community as an example to others, but also making sure that everybody is safe.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, how do we incorporate the suggestions that the councilwoman has requested?
Thank you, Mayor Jeff Dorkack, City Attorney. That was going to be our next thing, turning it over to Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So some of that is direction to staff, so there is open code enforcement cases, which we can do regular inspections, in which to make sure that the barbed wire is removed in a timely manner. There was also the original conditions of approval, which did state that that was supposed to be removed 120 days from its original approval, so there is additional things in which to do compliance with, as well as the gates being open for the available parking. That is a condition on the original approval, so that is something they have to maintain, and that's a compliance thing that we will also do through code enforcement. As far as the one year, we'll have to amend conditions number one on both of the EOTs to reflect a date of January 18, 2026 versus 2027, to curtail it to one year versus a two-year extension. And then as far as an overall maintenance concern and how they're going to address the future maintenance of the site, I do have a lengthy condition in which to read into the record, it would be placed on EOT number two. It would read as follows. Prior to the exercising of the Site Development Plan Review as expressed in Title 1916100J, the developer is required to record a declaration of private maintenance requirements, also known as a DP, DPMR, as a covenant on all associated properties and on behalf of all current and future property owners. The DPMR is to include a listing of all private owners and/or maintenance infrastructure improvements, along with assignments of maintenance responsibilities for each of the subject site's landscape areas, including but not limited per perimeter landscaping, parking lot landscaping, and foundation landscaping, and is to provide a brief description of the required level of maintenance for privately maintained components, including but not limited to building elevations, parking lot striping, trash enclosures, and driveway pans. The DPR, DPMR must be reviewed and approved by the City of Las Vegas Department of Community Development prior to the exercising of the Site Development Plan Review as expressed in Title 1916100J. Must include a statement that all properties within the subject site are subject to the assessments of, for all associated costs, such as private maintenance obligations, not, should private, costs should private maintenance obligations not be met, and the City of Las Vegas be required to provide for said maintenance. Following recordation, the developer is to submit a copy of the recorded DPMR document to the City of Las Vegas Department of Community Development. And that ends that long condition.
Thank you for your clarification. Is that acceptable to you?
Absolutely.
In that case, Ms. Summers Armstrong, will you make a motion?
Mayor, happily. Well, I move to approve.
All right.
A and B with the amendments and other things that we discussed here.
Thank you for not repeating it. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 25. Discussion for possible action regarding the recommended fiscal year 2026 tentative budget for the City of Las Vegas and the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency. This affects all wards. Mr. City Manager.
Good morning, Mayor Berkeley, members of city council, Mike Janson, City Manager. And, you know, I've been lucky enough to have a dream team in the city manager's office, and so for today's presentation, I have two of those dream team members with me. I have our chief financial officer, Susan Helsley, and I have our deputy city manager, Steve Ford. Mayor Berkeley, members of city council, every fiscal year, we face different budget themes, and this year, as you'll see, we have themes that are a little bit different from the themes that we had in some prior years. We have some fiscal challenges this year. Those fiscal challenges can be summarized by three primary ones. One is the Badlands settlement. That does require some belt tightening that you will see in this budget. It has a significant impact on our general fund reserves, but as you all know, we've been planning for that scenario, the scenario of a settlement, for a number of years, and that fiscal planning is what's going to allow us to move forward quickly and get this particular issue behind us, as I want to make sure everyone knows, without any layoffs. And also, that fiscal planning that started some years back, you'll see that in an upcoming slide, we ended fiscal year '24 with the largest general fund reserve probably in the history of the city of Las Vegas at close to $300 million. And that was not done by accident. That was done with a lot of work with departments, with mayor and council, so that we would be in a position to be able to take care of the situation. So I want to make sure everyone is aware of that. Another challenge we face this year that doesn't come up every year, but it comes up when there is a change in the PERS contributions. This year, we, we had planned for an increase, but the increase came in higher. We don't have any control over this. These are increases that we are required to incorporate into our budget, and so as you'll see in the second bullet there, the PERS increases for our early retirees is going up by 8.75%. For our judicial members, it's going up by 1.5, and then for all the rest of our regular employees, it's going up by 3.75%. We've also faced this year some unique pressures on the consolidated tax. We would use the term that our consolidated tax has softened, and as a result of that softening, the question is, well, what's behind that? And so out of all of our sources of revenue, C-Tax is the most volatile, and that's because that C-Tax is very dependent on what's happening internationally and nationally as it relates to visitation to our community as a whole. All of that plays a role in C-Tax being up, down, or kind of staying consistent. This year, C-Tax is seeing some drops, and so as a result of that, we asked our departments to present 5% and 10% decrement plans so that we can get through the softened C-Tax. We also asked them to keep expanded budget requests at a minimum, and I want to thank all the work from our directors. Most of them are in the room here. You know, this is the type of budget year where with all of us collaborating, we all know what we had to do, and again, I want to thank them all for their, for their efforts. I want to point out what you see up there on the upper right, and that is that public safety remains the number one priority in this budget, and it's good to remember, when you look at all of our services, the highest budget allocation in our budget, number one, is the budget allocation to Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department and Department of Public Safety. Police services, correction services, or animal control services, this budget has $285 million allocated to that part of public safety. And right behind that allocation is the fire department. Our fire department allocation this year is $230 million. So that note that you see there, public safety remains our number one priority, it absolutely does, based on how the dollars are being allocated in this budget. I want to talk a little bit about capital projects. As we've discussed in many of our briefings this year, we've had a few projects that we have to delay, but the good news is the timing is really working for us this year, where we have an opportunity to issue a C-Tax revenue bond, as well as a park bond that is funded through dollars that are restricted, can only be used for parks, that we get from the Las Vegas Convention and Visit Authority. Those two bonds are going to allow us to take an original list of delayed projects and significantly reduce them, and you'll see that in some upcoming slides from Steve. I think important, again, to go back to that public safety number one priority, all of the key public safety projects that we've had in process, they're all moving forward, and Steve has a great slide to show you details of what those ones are. While you see here the overall available funding is less than fiscal year '25, that's the overall funding from the general fund to CIPs. You'll see a slide coming up that shows all money going to CIPs. That's federal, state, our local agency partners, like Regional Flood Control, Regional Transportation Commission, all of our other agency partners. We're actually putting more money into our capital than we did last year, when you look at it as a whole. So from that perspective, I think that's a pretty positive point for us to make today. Moving on a little bit more to get into a little bit of the details on the fiscal challenges. So in, in most budget years, we kind of go with a blanket vacancy factor for all departments of 3%. What that usually means is that the end of the year, we have a larger portion that goes unspent, and that rolls into the following year's capital budget. This year, because we have limitations on how big the budget can be, we wanted to use all of our historical data and set the vacancy factor that is accurate to what our historical data shows for each department. Some departments at 3% is pretty consistent, others, for a variety of factors, that vacancy factor is higher. So as some examples, you'll see here on our public safety side, they see higher vacancy rates, and it's largely due to things like the police academy and the fire academy. We have to fund positions for all of those slots, but in any academy, there's a number of folks that don't make it to the finish line, and yet that position is still funded throughout the year, so they have a higher vacancy rate. We also have much higher retirement rates on those sides of the house, because they can retire earlier, and then some of them resign to take jobs at other communities across the country. There's very high demand for firefighters, for police officers, for corrections officers, and then, again, as I mentioned, some folks, they go through the process and they don't get confirmed. So as a result, our data shows that on our Marshall's side, a 6% vacancy factor is pretty consistent, and 8% on our corrections side, and about 7% for our early retirement retirees on the fire side. Most departments in this budget are also using some vacant positions to contribute towards their 5% towards their 5% and 10% decriments. The interesting thing in this budget that we've had some good conversation on is, we're actually keeping all these positions in the staffing plan. They're not being eliminated. What that allows us to do throughout fiscal year '26, as we look at our revenues from month to month, we'll have an opportunity to bring revenue dollars back to some of those positions if our month-to-months show that we can do that. I'd like to point out that there's no uniformed officers or firefighters impacted by any other decriments. And I think this is important for the public to know, and of course, Mayor and Council, you know this, we do not have a hiring freeze. We had some vacancy management when we were working out the details of the settlement, where we had to do a temporary hold. And that freeze is no longer existing. We are hiring. If you go on our city webpage today, you'll see we're hiring corrections officers, marshals, firefighters, equipment operators, engineers, lifeguards. Again, I want to make sure that everyone knows that we are absolutely hiring. We need help from our community to do what we do best. Another little unique piece of our fiscal plan this year was to offer a voluntary separation program that helped us bring some of those vacancies forward. This is savings over a two-and-a-half-year period. It's going to bring to the budget about $6.1 million in savings. Those 21 positions, those will be the 21 positions that really are frozen for a two-and-a-half-year period. But outside those, those are the only ones that are frozen. So with that, I want to just mention that departments in their budget, they also identified some reductions to services and supplies to contribute towards their decriments at 5% and 10%. In a good budget year, we can have a lot of nice-to-haves in the budget. This year, we had to make sure we funded all the must-haves and a smaller amount of the nice-to-haves. And so that's what's in that 5% and 10% decrement. So Mayor and Council, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike, to our CFO, Susan Helsley, and let her walk you through some of the more details of the budget.
Thanks, Mike. Susan Helsley, CFO for the record. And before I get into my slides, I just want to have a shout-out. I really want to appreciate all of the different department directors that helped us with this budget. I know it's never fun when your CFO gets up there and says, "We need 5% and 10% decriments." They all came through, so thanks for that. And I also really want to have a shout-out to the finance team. Gail Lloyd-Licos and Quinn Oshakuski, they are amazing finance directors and budget managers. They put all of this together in a very quick timeframe, so I really appreciate all the work that they do. So thanks, guys. And the rest of the finance team, they all really pitch in for this. So moving into our slides, I get to talk about how we end up in FY '25 and what it looks like going into FY '26. So in our FY '25 General Fund Year End Estimate summary, we believe our revenues are going to be greater than our budget by about $14.4 million. So our property and room tax year-end, we believe that's going to be at $7 million. We get that money, or we get those estimates from the state. And those numbers are solid. We basically pick up about 99, over 99% of that money that comes in. So when they say you're going to get the money, we get it in a timely manner, so there's no cash flow issues. We enjoy our property tax because it's pretty accurate. Our C-Tax Year End Estimate is coming in $7 million less than budget. It's just an ironic thing that they zero out. As Mike was saying earlier, we are seeing some softening on the C-Tax side. We have been running about 1% under budget. We met with our Financial Advisory Committee back in February, and it was, we think we could, some thought we could be up, some thought we could be down. We said, "You know what? We're going to kind of go in the middle. I figure we're going to be flat to 1%." So for this year, we think it's going to be about $7 million less. Our revenue estimates for licenses, service charges, and fines are $4.7 million greater than budget. Settlements and judgments and other revenue, that's about $4 million greater than budget. So when we look at our settlements and judgments, we had some money that came in from some franchise audits. Those happen every three years, so we had two that came in this year. It was Cox and CenturyLink. So that amounted to about $4 million. And then we had $5.8 million that was transferred into the General Fund as ARPA revenue replacement, and that met the deadline, a 12/31/24, where those funds had to be obligated. So we moved them out of the Special Revenue Fund and into our General Fund so that we could continue making those obligations. So when we look at our estimate of expenditures, we estimate that we're going to exceed our budget by almost $65 million. In a normal year, I would be like, "Okay, guys, what are we doing? Why are we over by $65 million?" But as we get into the numbers, it'll make sense. So our services and supplies, we're projecting to exceed our budget by about $18 million. The majority of that is due to spending on ARPA projects, and it's just how we budget for them. We don't budget for those ARPA programs when we go into the current fiscal year because we don't know how much they're going to be spent. They were actually budgeted in the prior year, so then we chew everything up at the end of the fiscal year. So we'll be good once we make our augmentations. Salaries and Bennies, they're underrunning budget by $9.8 million. That's largely contributed to our PJC vacancy management. As Mike said, we do have some positions that we get together every month. We look at any position that's open. We make the decision, is it going to be held for a little while? Are we going to hire it immediately? Or do we need to hold it for longer? So between that, the VSP, and our vacancy management, we've saved almost $10 million this year. Contributions, capital outlay, and debt, that's running right about budget at $1.5 million. And then we did move an additional $53.3 million to the Liability and Property Damage ISF, that's our Internal Service Fund, for our Badlands settlement, at about $1.6 million to capital projects. I'll remind everybody, when we built the budget last year, we weren't expecting to settle Badlands. And so we didn't budget for it, so we've had to do some fancy, some fancy footwork to get things moved around. But I can assure you, we will be at appropriation authority. Everything's fine. It's just that we had to move everything into that Liability and Property Damage ISF. So if we look at FY '26, our revenue assumptions, we think we're going to be at about 4.5% over. Now, this does include $30 million of bond proceeds. Mike mentioned earlier that we're planning to go out for a C-Tax Revenue Bond, where we can recapture some cash that we've spent on capital projects in the last couple of years. So that's about $30 million that we've got reflected in the General Fund. So our C-Tax increase, again, we're reflecting about a 1% increase. It's very consistent with the other agencies, also with our Financial Advisory Committee because they were like anywhere between 3% down to 3% up. It's kind of a coin flip right now. So we're going with a 1%. Property Tax, that's going to increase by 7.1%. Our assessed value is increasing at 11.2. We're keeping that tax cap at 3% and 8%. Our abatements at 60.7 million. Our license and franchise fees, those increase at 1.5%. Those are mandated. Most of them are at 5%. So it's just whatever the CPI goes up, we end up getting more franchise fees. And then our fines, charges for services and other revenues, those are decreasing by about 7%. We expect to have a reimbursable revenue decrease of about 10%. That's due to our lower RTC funding. Generally speaking, when we have RTC projects, our folks charge to their projects, and then we get reimbursed, we know that RTC is having a bit of a struggle on their federal funding, so less of it will trickle down to us. And their other revenue is going to decrease by 50%, and that's related to those one-time franchise audit revenues. And also, we won't be getting any more ARPA money. So the ARPA money has all been either spent or moved into the General Fund. And then just as a side note, we've got about $8.3 million coming in on the Medicaid reimbursement. So some more revenue assumptions. Contribution from the Redevelopment Agency, $3.5 million. That goes up with the CPI every year. Like I said, our transfers are decreasing almost 17% to the completion of ARPA. And then let's get into our C-Tax Revenue Bond that we've got for a total of $70 million. So $30 million of that 70, we will allocate to our General Fund reserves. We want to maintain at least a 20% ending funding balance. And that's for a couple of reasons. We want to protect our bond rating. Right now, we are a double A, and we would like to keep that because that keeps our borrowing charges cheaper for our taxpayers, and also for the city, of course. We do have a potential to reissue the FY 2016 City Hall Bonds at a lower interest rate. So as long as we keep our bond rating looking good, we will be evaluating if we want to move forward with that later this year. Those bonds are callable this year. It's hard to believe it's already been 10 years. Crazy. So we've got $20 million in capital for restoration of some delayed projects. As you guys remember, part of how we're paying for Badlands this year is we delayed about $50 million in capital projects. So we would like to try to bring $20 million of that back for restoration of those delayed projects. We've got $15 million in capital for additional bid reserve, and that's to account for any new tariffs that may materialize, for materials and supply costs. And just in the last couple of years, we go out for bid, and it comes in substantially higher than what we've been estimating. And then for the last $5 million, we're putting that into capital for fire apparatus and equipment replacements. Because as we were talking earlier, we were asking people not to ask for things in this budget, so there's not a lot of new money flowing in. So we thought this would be a good way to maintain our fire apparatus and equipment. So this just shows us our pie chart of our General Fund revenues, and you'll see consolidated tax is well over 50%. And as Mike said, it's our most volatile. There's a chart that we'll be showing you in a couple of slides, how it's increased over $100 million since 2019. And a lot of that had to do with all of the stimulus money that flowed in. And now that the stimulus money is no longer flowing, it's really leveled out. And then property tax, that's our next largest. Our other is, for this particular fiscal year, is pretty high. And then licenses and franchise makes up the other 15%. So we're pretty well-balanced on our other three revenue sources, but consolidated tax is definitely the largest. So here's the slide I was speaking of, the consolidated tax history. So if you look back in FY '19, we were at $323 million. It fell a little bit during COVID, bounced back up, but then it really took off in FY ' '22. It went from $323 million to $412 million, and you can see it's been kind of bumping around ever since. So we are estimating it down this fiscal year from last fiscal year. It was $443 million. We think this fiscal year will be $435, back up to about $440. And I'll tell you, we keep a very close eye on our C-Tax. Property Tax, this is another interesting chart, because if you look back in like FY ' '11, we were down to $102 million. It fell to a low of $88 million in FY '14, and we finally climbed back up in FY '17. We got up to $99 million. Today, we're at $182.6. So we have really, our property tax has taken off even with those 3% caps. And you can see our abatement's actually going down a little bit, from $66 million to $59.7. So we are starting to dig a little bit into that abatement. Our expenditure highlights. So as we talked before, not a lot going on this year. A lot of decriments, a lot of just kind of holding the line. That being said, Metro did come in with an increase of 2.8%. We did not ask Metro for decriments. We did let them know that our departments, ours and the county, because the county also funds Metro, we were both worried about C-Tax, and so we were looking at decrement budgets. So they went, and they really pared down their budget. So they've got the 2.8% increase, and I'll remind you that they also have that big PERS increase that they're having to cover for the majority of their folks. So they've got additional personnel. We've got three commissioned officers, seven civilian, and four part-timers in there. They've got a little bit for technology, it's about $1 million. So they're about a $5 million increase over last year. And just to put it in perspective, their budget's $180 million. So it's a pretty big chunk. We do have contract increases for the Animal Foundation. We're currently negotiating their RFP that went out. We do expect there will be some level of an increase. We just haven't, we have not come to terms on what that increase will be. We've also got contract increases for inmate medical care and inmate culinary. We just remodeled five and six over at the jail, those units. We will have more inmates, and with more inmates comes more costs. We've also put in money for the Regional Aquatic Center opening that will be opening sometime early next year. And then our Civic Plaza building, we have the openings for that. They will be opening within the next few months, so we do have money in there for that. Just to remind everybody, too, we added staff for that building in this particular budget, in FY '25. So we have staff for the opening. We will be reevaluating to determine what we need going forward on that building. And then just to remind everyone, we've got all of our collective bargaining agreements. PPA and POA, they're in negotiations right now. Fire and CEA, they're valid through 2026, and then POSA is also valid through 2026. So we have all of those numbers built into this current budget as well, except for PPA and POA. We have like a 3%. We'll see what, we'll see how those end up. So on our FY '26 expenditure highlights, usually the slide gets really long. I know in the last couple of years, I've probably gone through four pages where we've added a lot of staff. Well, this year, we've added seven new positions, and they're all in different revenue funds, revenue sources. None are in the General Fund this year. So we have two that are moving into our Special Revenue Funds, and those are for our SIDs. We have had a lot of activity on those SIDs this year. We have 13 that are active with developers. We have three that are active non-developers, two in process, five more that are anticipated. So we think we've got a lot coming down the pike. And talking both finance and public works, we have very few people that actually work on these SIDs, and it takes a lot of work. And so the SIDs give us money for the administrative fees, so we've got enough that we can hire two additional positions to help out on that. For the enterprise funds, we're adding one senior underground utility technician to our sewer fund. And then our Internal Service Fund, we've got four positions coming into FireCom. So FireCom is a joint venture between the county, North Las Vegas, and the city, so we charge out a lot of those costs. So we've got an agreement to add four more folks. So you can see that we've got three non-public safety positions, and four public safety positions for a total of seven. And this next slide just shows our full-time equivalent history that's happening since 2021, which is interesting. We've had a growth in public safety positions of 9.6% versus 4.9% for non-public safety. So since 2018, we have grown from 3,500 positions to almost 3,900 positions. So like Mike said, we are open for business, and we are hiring, which is great news for the city and for all of our constituents in the community. Looking at our General Fund expenditures, we've got this pie chart in a couple of different ways. This one shows our salaries and benefits, or by category. So this shows what we call by our line items. So salaries and benefits is definitely our largest one, of almost 45%. Then our non-labor is 20%. You can see Metro, 20% of our budget. There's almost $186 million this year. Debt service is a little tiny sliver. And other this year is very large, and as we get into the actual number chart, I'll point out to you why other has become such a big part of our budget this year. And then if we look at by function, as Mike was saying, public safety is our number one priority. It's reflected in our budget. Almost 60% of our $880 million goes to public safety functions. So $517 million, so that's Metro, that's our DPS, that's Fire, part of public works, a lot of, anyone, a lot of public works folks, and a lot of neighborhood services go into the public safety realm. Other, again, 16%, $142 million. You can just see how the rest of it's kind of all divvied up. And here is our General Fund Tentative Budget. We are reflecting the $30 million from our revenue bond. So as Mike was saying, in FY '24, we ended up with a 35% unrestricted fund balance of $286.7 million. Interestingly enough, you'll see that we transferred out almost $70 million in FY ' '24. That was for the Badlands payment from last year, the $64 million that came due. So we were able to move that out of the General Fund and into our ISF to cover that. For FY '25, you'll see that we've got a transfer out to other funds of almost $82 million. Again, that's for Badlands. We're making another transfer into our ISF to make that payment. So this year, we are ending up with a shortfall of $72.5 million. We're still at 24%, $214.2 million for unrestricted fund balance. Moving into next year, you'll see we've got another transfer out of other funds of almost $92 million. So in FY '26, we do have to, we are still finishing up the Badlands. We need to, we borrowed some money from our sanitation fund, so we will be paying that back in FY '26. And you'll see on the other, in FY '26, of $114 million up in the revenue part of it, that's the $30 million that will come in from the bonds. So that's keeping our unrestricted fund balance at 21.5%. And I just want to reiterate to what Mike was saying. We went back into this budget knowing that we needed to be saving money, which is one of the reasons why we looked at those vacancy factors very, very carefully. We wanted to make sure that we wanted to be very, pretty accurate with our budget versus actuals, so that folks weren't tempted at the end of the fiscal year to say, "Hey, I still have money. Can I buy this?" And it's like, nope, we really need it for savings, to generate that 21.5%, especially since C-Tax is a little lumpy, squishy. So this is just our General Fund forecast, and you'll see in '23 and '24, we ran surplus budgets, which are always nice to have. The deficits for '25 and '26, again, they're really, that's part, that's Badlands that's driving all that. We go back to a surplus in '27 and '28, and you'll notice that from '29 to '31, we're back in the red. We've got a few things going on there. Campus for Hope comes on in '27. That's, again, an unfunded mandate that we're going, we've put aside money to budget for. And in FY '30 and '31, we've got a new fire station coming on over in Summerlin. And with fire stations comes people and apparatus and things. So we just want to make sure we've got that all covered. And with this slide, I will hand it off to Steve Ford.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Members of Council, Steve Ford, Deputy City Manager. This first slide is just showing where we get our money for our capital projects. There'll be a list of different funding sources, some with restrictions, some without. Note on the LVCVA parks, that's where we would get the, where the bond Note on the LVCVA parks, that's where we would get the, where the bond comes in and the money that is transferred to us from LVCVA would go for the debt service on those. That the first bond will, we are anticipating paying off at the end of this year. And then potentially another bond in FY '27. So I wanted to just take a moment, talk about the big projects going on in your respective wards that are either under construction or will be open bids and under construction in FY '26. And so in Ward 1, we're working on the Craig and Park soccer field upgrades. Ward 2, the big Regional Aquatic Center Pavilion Pool that was funded a majority by the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act grant, which is going on. Ward 3, the East Las Vegas Family Dog Park, which is the dog park right adjacent to the new family park in Ward 3. Ward 4, we're putting in some money for the Nevada State Veterans Memorial at Thunderbird Park. We expect that to be bidding by the end of the year and working with the state on a transfer agreement for that memorial. Ward 4, Ward 5. And in my opinion, as I've mentioned to you before, one of the more important projects we have is the library remodel at West Las Vegas. So when the library district moves out, we will be able to move right in afterwards and not let that building sit vacant. And then Ward 6, I just saw some pictures about the restroom addition outside the Hay Barn up at Floydland Park. That's going along very well. Some of the major public safety projects we have going on in each of the wards. Ward 1, the 103, 3-bay replacement there on Upland is, we're expecting the design completion this year. There'll be a new Summerlin West Fire Station that we're working with the developer on right now to get that agreement and hopefully finalize the site before the end of, actually, this calendar year. The Fire Training Center, Ward 3, we're expecting to get started to rehab that facility. The multi-agency Joint 911 Center up in Ward 4 is a joint project between the city and Metro. And that should be going on that large piece of property up there on the curve. Ward 5 is the Fire Station 1 rehabilitation. We were anticipating Fire Station 1 to be torn down with the Downtown Access Project, but since that project got canceled, we need to get to do some work in there for those, the firefighters and fire admin. And then Ward 6 is Sky Canyon and the Providence Area Substation and Park. That's going right next to it. So going forward in FY '26, we are, as was mentioned, we're looking at this anticipated bond through the LVCVA, using those dollars to pay for it. We are expecting potentially having those bonds, the money available sometime mid-2026, fiscal year 2026. And then, as was mentioned, there'll be the additional $20 million through the C-tax that will go towards either the projects that were put on pause or whatever priority you find is needed in your ward. And I will be meeting with each of you over the next couple of weeks before we get to the final budget to determine your priorities and how you'd like that money to go forward. And with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. James.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Susan. I got a couple of wrap-up slides here. Before I get into the wrap-up, I want to walk you through another really important part of our annual budget, our overall operations. That's our redevelopment agency. And our redevelopment agency has got various restrictions at the federal and state level. But the redevelopment agency can be eligible for all kinds of unique financial tools that some other areas of the city aren't. So our RDA covers portions of Ward 1, 3, and 5. And a couple of the things I'd like to really point out on this slide are, you'll see at the top, the assessed value. We had a couple of really big increases in fiscal year '24 and '25. A lot of that was the projects in Symphony Park that were actually given a C of O and opened with new residents living in there. And then you'll see in FY '26, we're almost flat. Officially, the numbers we got were slightly down. And the reason for that is, as you all know, our property tax, once it's added to the property rolls, those big projects, each year after, there is actually a reduction. So a couple of the big projects that were added, they're actually seeing that depreciation component. But additionally, we've got a number of properties in the redevelopment area that had old buildings on them. The buildings have been removed from the site and those sites are being prepared for new development. So when it goes from a site that had a building to just a vacant lot, there's actually a drop in the overall taxes. But what I will point out to you, we anticipate a huge increase in our assessed value in FY '27. And that's because what you see across the street and around a lot of the areas downtown, we have in FY '27, the AC Marriott Hotel next to the Smith Center will be open. We have the Southern Land High Rise and Mid Rise. We also have a Southern Land Arts District Project and a Cedar Street Project. All of those projects are going to start coming on to the tax rolls, most of them in FY '27. So we anticipate seeing a very big bump in assessed value, specifically in the RDA next year. And those are just the big ones. As you all know, there's dozens of smaller, small business owners who are doing improvements in numerous areas of the RDA. And those are also going to have an effect on the overall assessed value. You'll also note, you know, when we talk about the redevelopment agency, we can't talk about the RDA without its efforts to be supportive of all things in the medical district. And so, you know, we've had such a great relationship with UMC, with UNLV. And a few sessions ago, council meeting, we had a great recognition of all the new improvements that UMC has just been completing. They have so much more in the pipeline. But what the RDA is doing is also working with every level of education to continue to provide ways for our community to be trained to be able to service all of the jobs that are needed, we need help on, on the medical side. And so you'll see there, the RDA is working with CSN on a medical education and training center. They're working with Nevada State University on a juvenile allied health center. The aforementioned in some of our prior briefings, the Biomed Challenge Grant to bring a biomedical footprint into the medical district. And the more recent discussion, working closely with Mayor Protem, is furthering that relationship that we have with UNLV related to the practice. UNLV practice has a lot of offerings in the medical district. But something that we really need is an investment in mental and behavioral health center. And so the RDA is working with all those groups to try to help these projects get to the finish line. Symphony Park has been the gem of the RDA for many years. There's not too many parcels left. Couple of the ones that you'll be seeing coming out of the ground soon is the Scott Goldstein and his team are going to be developing a beautiful medical office building. We've been having a great partnership with Elaine Nguyen and her team to bring an incredible art museum to Symphony Park. And then very soon, a groundbreaking is coming up for a next big high-rise, a condominium high-rise called the Cello Tower. One of our most tried and true programs is the VIP program. We've had that for many, many years. A newer program that we created during the ARPA period was a safety and security grant program. And working with the wards, what I heard was that program was really, really helpful. Unfortunately, the ARPA funds have been fully spent. So in this year's budget, we've allocated some of the RDA dollars so we can keep that safety, security grant program going. Downtown special events is what makes downtown so great. Public safety, to have a parade, to have a concert, there are costs. So the RDA feels it's money well spent to have a piece of the overall cost of maintaining special events, particularly to help offset some of the public safety costs. Most developers will tell you, power is the big issue downtown. So there's an incentive program to assist with some of the power upgrades. A really important component this year that we had talked about last year, this year, we think these projects are going to make it to where these bonds will be most useful. And that is a $50 million bond issuance from the RDA. And this is to support a very exciting Mob Museum expansion. I met with the Mob team just the other day. It's about a $49 million expansion. It's a very exciting project. They've been working on it, and this is going to be the year to bring it out. So there'll be a component with the RDA and the Mob Museum. Also, the Neon Museum Expansion. We have a great relationship with their CEO, Aaron Berger. We've shown this here as a museum expansion and/or relocation. As you know, where they currently are, they need a much bigger space. So we've worked closely with them on a variety of options. And we're hopeful that pretty soon, we'll be able to bring to you just what that looks like. And then again, other catalyst projects. We contribute dollars to the city for maintenance. So the RDA, in the RDA area, some of the dollars goes towards maintaining streets, street sweeping, things of that nature. And then the last item on the RDA highlight is a brand-new program this year. And this is basically taking feedback from mayor and council where there are a number of vacant, abandoned and boarded-up buildings. And to have an incentive to have those buildings either rehabbed or removed, if they're no longer salvageable, some dollars from the RDA to try to incentivize and identify those buildings that just, you know, they're an eyesore. So we think this is a good program to help support that. The RDA's overall budget slide, just a couple of things that I wanted to point out here is, number one, you'll see up there in the upper left, the 18% set aside. That's now about $8 million of the RDA funds that goes towards education and goes towards affordable housing, an important part of the overall RDA offerings. You'll see also the 53.2 under other contributions. That's where that $50 million bond issuance would be captured as revenue. And then going down into the expenditures, you'll see the $3.5 million that's in there for contribution to the general fund. And that's 67 million, that is the bond. And that's all those programs that we just walked you through in terms of how those will be implemented. You'll also see here that there's no dollar shown towards a contribution to the Parking Enterprise Fund. Last year, the RDA contributed $5 million towards the overall Parking Enterprise. But this year, there's no need to do that. And so again, a good picture there. Particularly, you see we have still a strong ending fund balance, which is going to allow us to get a good interest rate on those bonds. And, you know, I'd really be remiss if I didn't mention one particular aspect of the redevelopment agency that I think is something we should all be celebrating. And that is, the largest RDA investment that is coming to the city is coming from our partner, Lennar, in the redevelopment of Cashman. That project alone, land, utilities, infrastructure, the build-out, is easily $400 to $500 million, a huge investment within the RDA. And, you know, hot off the press this morning, during, I want to make sure I get the thing right. It was called the Legislative Joint Money Committee Discussion that was just held this morning. It was announced from the governor's office that Lennar is also going to be buying the Sawyer site. And so again, a national home builder who has not done work in the RDA before is planning to invest hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars in our city. So again, I want to just take a moment to thank Lennar's team just for those elements. We know they're doing work in other areas of the city as well. So definitely exciting time. This slide here is kind of the wrap-up on the overall budget discussion that you've heard today. And I've got just a couple of things I'd like to point out. I'd like you to first take a look at the total. Our budget this year that you'd be looking to endorse and approve in this tentative budget presentation is for $2.3 billion. That is the budget for FY '26 when you capture all of the funds that's in our budget. Number two, I just would like to point out on the special revenue fund, a lot of times, there's a question on just what's in there. That's our direct motor vehicle fuel tax that we get from the state. That's all of our grants. That's our LVCVA room tax. That's our fire safety tax. On the capital side, you know, you see that number, $585 million. As I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, this year's total capital is actually more than last year's. And that total capital has, you know, all sources of capital dollars at the federal, state, local level that are coming into the city for developing a lot of really good projects. The debt service fund, you know, you'll see there, the $50 million, that includes the new C-tax bond that we talked about. But it also includes the City Hall bond, the courthouse bond, our Smith Center bond, also Civic Plaza across the street. So a lot of things are in that particular line item. The last thing I want to point out really to you all is that population number on the bottom. You'll see we continue to grow. Every corner of the city is growing. It doesn't matter if you're in the outer edges or if the inner core. We are growing year to year to year. And the numbers are important, I think, for us to just realize how the city has grown. We're now, depending on the index you look at, we're now the 23rd largest city in the country. And, you know, for just appreciating a lot of cities that are much older than us, we've now stepped ahead of Boston, Detroit. We've stepped ahead of Portland and Washington DC. And with thousands of new housing units in the planning, construction phase, we're going to continue to grow. And I think that's something that we should all be proud of, that folks are looking to move here, folks are looking to invest here. And it's attributable to mayor, council, and our entire city team. And so with that, the key budget takeaway for you today is, you know, we have some challenges that we've had to work into this budget for Badlands, PERS, and C-tax. Our plan gets us through that. Public safety remains our number one priority. Susan noted, we are bringing you a conservative budget, taking into account all the information that's been shared. And while our general funded is going to be in a deficit, we're leaning on those general funds to cover that settlement. We prepared ourselves for it in a really good way to where we don't have any layoffs. And at the end of the day, mayor and council, I just say, good planning, good fiscal management, good leadership, continued developer investment. Our future is very bright. And I think our team would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. That was extraordinarily impressive. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the city council? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. And thank you, Mike and team, for the presentation and for the staff that put the budget together. I know how much work it is. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that are important to me between tentative and final budget. One is, Mike, I think if it's okay with you, working with you and bringing together the leaders of those higher ed institutions to kind of map out how we're all going to work together. Because I think in our discussions and in all of my discussions, sometimes they're a little bit competitive and territorial amongst each other. So I think we can take a leadership role. And maybe at a subsequent briefing, talk to the rest of the council about what an academic medical center is and the hub of healthcare and mental health care workforce hub in the city of Las Vegas means to the rest of the valley. Because it hits, I know our number one priority is public safety, but it also hits our second and third priority being healthcare and economic diversification. Those high-paying jobs inside the city of Las Vegas means more tax money coming into the city and a higher quality of life for the entire valley. So I'll work with you on maybe scheduling that meeting and just doing a pow-wow with the higher ed leaders. And then maybe we can use that as a briefing point for the rest of the council. The second is, I think we talked in a briefing about the 988 system, the crisis response system, and maybe the fire department being a little bit more engaged in the transport of mental health patients. We had talked about the inclusion of a few extra vehicles for the fire department. I just want to caution, I think it sounds like we're adding on more. But I think it's, if I were to kind of rethink it, it's taking mental health off of our first responders and anticipating a broader mental health system coming into place. That is, the state of Nevada implementing 988 at the end of this year. And then there are two crisis response centers that are opening up in the next six months or so. So it's going to pretty drastically change how our first responders are picking up and transporting people who are suffering from some kind of crisis. And my goal would be to take our first responders that we have now and focus them more on emergencies, either fire emergencies, medical emergencies, or police emergencies. And then really trying to get ahead of what our mental health system's going to look like. So if we can, between now and final, work with our fire department to figure out what that looks like, if it's appropriate or not appropriate, I still don't know. And there's a bill going through the legislature right now that would allow for Medicaid reimbursement to make sure that we're not losing money on it, but we're actually making money and then still freeing up our first responders. So other than those two requests, just incredibly grateful and proud to be part of your team and the 23rd largest city in the country.
Mayor Protem, I'll just mention to you, I have a meeting with Tim and Chief Gray on Monday. We're going to be talking about all things 988. And that's sort of a prequel to bringing to mayor and council a whole picture on the 988 and all of our efforts in responding to those crisis calls. And so we want to make sure we have all the bases covered. And so I appreciate Chief Gray and his team's work on everything up to now on that. on that. And we want to make sure the entire council is aware of what that whole picture looks like with the bill likely passing and, and all those elements. So definitely some follow-ups coming. And the commitment that I made was that between tentative and final, based on the outcome of that briefing, if we needed to bring something else into the budget for that component, we would do that.
Are there any comments or questions from other city council members? In that case, Mayor Protem, would you like?
Yes. Well, I just want to say that I'm super proud of how well you all have prepared us. This is my first budget with the city. I've been through this process many years with another organization, and I'm proud of the conservative, aggressive approach of being, but really, because you're thinking ahead, but placing us in a position where we are looking out for our employees as well as for our city and making sure that we are looking forward, making sure that we are not being, you know, arbitrary in decisions. And this is really, really exciting. I'm proud to be a city council member on the 23rd largest city in the nation. That is like amazing. And so, I'm really, really proud of you and look forward to discussions about the bond for the expansion or relocation of the Neon Museum. We've talked a little bit about that. And I think that some further discussions probably need to be had about what that looks like. But I'm excited about the possibilities of, of growth in Ward Five, top to bottom. And, and thank you all for your work. I appreciate it.
Nicely said. Is there anyone else that would like to say anything? In that case, Mayor Protem, may we have a motion?
With appreciation for everyone who put this together, I would move to approve.
Shall we vote? Please post. Motion passes. And thank you so much for your level of expertise and work on behalf of all of the citizens of the city of Las Vegas. We all thank you. Agenda item 38, reports and presentations. Report by Kelvin Watson, Executive Director, Las Vegas Clark County Library District regarding an update on current and upcoming initiatives as part of the National Library Week. This impacts all wards. Dr. Malisch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, Dr. Tammy Malisch, Director of Youth Development and Social Initiatives for the record. And it is my pleasure to bring Kelvin today to share incredible stats, great partnerships, and an incredible new project you might have seen in Ward Five coming soon. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Tammy. Good morning, Mayor Berkeley. Still morning, right?
Yeah, still morning.
Seems like a library day today. City council members and all guests. Again, I'm Kelvin Watson. I am the Executive Director for the Las Vegas Clark County Library District, and it is always my honor to join you, to provide you with a brief look at some of the library district's work during the second half of 2024 and so far in 2025. So what we've been doing at the library district is continuing to focus on early childhood learning. That's, during our last fiscal year, during this fiscal year, that's going to be something that we'll be continuing, as well as our STEAM classes, our arts and cultural performances, bringing our hands-on access to more technology, as well as health and wellness resources that the library offers. And of course, our robust job skills and education work program that we have with the library district, as well as with workforce connections. Last year, we hosted more than 36,000 programs that were attended by 817,000 residents, and there were 1.8 million visits to the library district's website. Library cardholders checked out more than 11 million items in our vast collection, which includes games, toys, parks, and museum passes. So we offer passes to the Neon Museum, as well the Springs Reserve, laptops, CDs, and DVDs, magazines, comics, and of course, we still have books in all forms, including hardcover, the audiobooks, and you have the ability to download them from our website, as well as to your phone with our new mobile app that I'll talk a little bit about later. We're very excited about the rapid progress being made on the construction of our new West Las Vegas Library located at 1861 North Martin Luther King Boulevard. But before I talk a little bit more about the new building, I'm going to talk a little bit about just a little history, looking back at our 50-year history serving the historic West Side. The original West Las Vegas Library opened as a storefront on D Street in 1973. Our current location on West Lake Mead Boulevard opened in 1989, and our new 21st Century Library will nearly triple in size to more than 40,000 square feet. It will include space for new programming and technology, plus we have planned mini outdoor activities. And what I really love is the ample parking that's going to be available at the new library. The grand opening is currently slated for Q1 2026, but we'll know more as, if you've had a chance to drive down MLK, it's, it's changing daily. I'm going to keep on going over there today, probably drive by. As you can see from this list here, the new West Las Vegas Library will truly be a 21st Century Library. We're expanding our children's service areas to include early childhood. We're going to have a tween area in the new library for middle school kids, and of course, an expanded teen zone, all of which will feature robust after-school activities and so much more. If you'd like to have your own personal tour, contact me and we will make that happen. Councilwoman Summers Armstrong was visiting a few weeks ago, so she had an opportunity to see what's happening with the library and her ward. One of my favorite programs that we, that we offer among, among many is our Summer Challenge. We're extremely proud of our Summer Challenge program, bringing reading and activities for babies, kids, and teens. And we also have a separate program for adults. So again, it's a family-oriented program. Both of these programs feature fantastic incentive prizes for all ages. Thanks to our generous partners that, that include the Vegas Golden Knights, made it to the playoffs again, the Las Vegas Raiders, NBA Summer League, Cox, and so many more. We're in the process of planning this year's Summer Challenge program, but I'd like to share with you that our 2024 program saw impressive gains thanks to a unique direct mail campaign that we implemented to reach and attract those who don't currently have a library card. Registrations for 2024 Summer Challenge increased by 57% year over year. Our completed activities increased by 31%. Total minutes spent reading increased by 26%. And 14% of our direct mail recipients signed up for a library card. We did this direct mailing to 60,000 households. We used to take boxes to the schools to see CSD, and we didn't see these types of numbers. So we're trying this, reaching the people and families and inviting them to, into the library. Continuing on speaking of partnerships, I'd like to take a moment to share a few of these important partnerships and what they bring to the library district and to the community. The NBA Summer League provides us with drawings for dozens of family four-pack ticket giveaways so they can enjoy the Summer League games. We use these four packs as an early signup incentive to get parents thinking about Summer Challenge in early May before school lets out. Our longest-running partnership is with the Vegas Golden Knights, who have been with us since the team was established here. The Golden Knights provide, provide us with thousands of crow-branded t-shirts, which we use as incentive prizes for Summer Challenge and other promotions throughout the year, as well as VGK player bookmarks, which feature the players' favorite books, movies, and music that you can check out at the library. The team also supports our VGK library cards and invites our outreach department to conduct library card signups during pre-game events at Toshiba Plaza. And our newest partner is the Las Vegas Raiders. They joined us this past year. We kicked our partnership off with the Raiders with a special storytime at the Whitney Library Branch, where we had 100 local students featuring a Raiders executive who is a children's author, Kiaba Martinez, to read to the children. The Raiders provide us with thousands of crow-branded t-shirts as well, which we use as incentive prizes for Summer Challenge and the other promotions throughout the year as well. And we've launched our Raiders Library Card, plus a special bookmark featuring mascot Raider Rusher and his favorite books, movies, and music. We partnered with the Sunrise Children's Hospital. We created a unique introduction to the library. With funding we received from, initially from our Library District Foundation, we developed our My First Library gift boxes for new mothers and caregivers. These boxes are filled with educational items that introduce the library and importance of early learning and literacy in the first five years of a child's life. We're currently in the, in the process of working with the state to receive an additional $100,000 to expand this program to other hospitals throughout the valley. And the program is also probably going to be statewide as well. So this is going to be a statewide model. In partnership with the Clark County Parks and Rec Department, we have created something to offer inside the parks, which is our Passport to Discovery QR Code posters. So these posters introduce the library and its resources to the visitors in the Clark County Community Centers. Right now, we are at six community centers and looking to expand more access to the library resources. And as you can see, each QR code is curated to specific content. So, and we can change those, the content out behind those QR codes. In our long partnership with Three Square Food Bank continues, with more than 37,600 meals served at 11 branches over the past three years. These include our hosting of the following Three Square programs: our Meetup &amp; Eat Up for Kids up to age 18 that we do during the school year, our Kids Cafe for, for kids up to age 18 that we host during the summer, and our Senior Community Lunch and Social Hour for ages 60-plus, offering crafts, lectures, games, films, and of course, food, and the importance of staying connected and making new friends. Before I close, I'd like to briefly share some other new initiatives that we have going on. I hope that you've had a chance to see some of those beautiful license plates that we now have available. I see many on, on the parking lot when I go to work. We have, we have sold over 100, so we're doing, we're doing well. And the checks, the checks have come in the mail. So, so you're going to see more of these as you drive around town. They're available now on the, from the DMV, and the proceeds from these license plates help us to fund essential library programming, including our Summer Challenge program that I talked about earlier. Our new library district app has arrived as well for your phone, so it puts the power of the library in the palm of your hand. It provides immediate, convenient access to library resources, services, programs, events from any iPhone or Android mobile device. And finally, I'm thrilled to share with you that this year, the library district is celebrating our 60th anniversary of service to the community. The Las Vegas Clark County Library District was originally formed in 1965 in order to consolidate services and create efficiencies with libraries. We're kicking off a district-wide 60th anniversary celebration next week, April 6th through 12th, which actually coincides with National Library Week. Our 25 branches will each hold their own unique anniversary celebration with lots of giveaways, activities, and fun for all ages. I invite all of you to stop by a few of our branches to help us celebrate. And you can find out more about the celebration dates and the locations by going to the website, thelibrarydistrict.org/60thanniversary. Again, as always, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share with you some of what we have accomplished, what we, what we have going on at the library district. I love coming every year. Yesterday, I was at the county, today I'm here. So this is, this is my, my week, since I'll be traveling next week and out during National Library Week activities next week. But our library district team is always proud to help our customers feel free-to-be, free-to-be, and you can see it on all of our places and spaces. And I wore my free-to-be pin as well. We will continue to find ways to inspire, educate, and uplift the diverse neighborhoods that we serve. And if you do not have your library card, get you a new Raiders one, I encourage you to get carded by stopping by your nearest library branch or by going to the website. Thank you. May I take any questions at this time?
Kelvin, absolutely spectacular. I can say without fear of contradiction how proud I am that we live in a community that values reading and libraries and appreciates what an impact it makes on our fellow citizens' lives. I am a lifelong reader. There's nothing that I enjoy more than curling up with a good book. And even if it's a bad book, I still read it until I can, can get to the conclusion. So, thank you. I still remember the first time that we met at lunch that was orchestrated by Elizabeth. And I remember thinking what a gift you are to the community. And today just validates exactly what I thought at our initial meeting. So thank you so much for what you do. And are there any questions or comments from, let's start over at the end. Okay, Ms. Armstrong?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much. Mr., is it doctor yet?
No doctor.
Not yet?
No, I'm done with school.
All right.
It's all those damn books.
No kidding. In addition to just being super excited about the West Las Vegas Library and having that amazing campus, and we still have to talk about our little connectivity thing from across the street, the library was the place where I got to, to run to when I was a kid and read and tuck in a corner. And it's always been a safe space. And it's wonderful that we haven't given up our libraries in our community. They, they serve a wonderful benefit to so many of our constituents, and I'm glad to have it. I cannot tell you how excited I am about your baby box. I think you know that I did a lot of legislation for doulas and maternal health when I was in the legislature. And I'd love to talk to you about expanding that to give them to our doulas who are also reaching our community as health workers. And this would be a wonderful collaboration. And I just think it's wonderful, and thank you for thinking outside the box of a library to reach our community in different ways and keep people engaged in, in improving their minds and finding just amazing places to go in books. So thank you.
Ms. Lewinsky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Watson, it's always a pleasure to do business with you. You're a great advocate for our library system and have done a remarkable job. And you're award-winning as well, you forgot to mention. The one thing I wanted to mention potentially on the record, Mr. Jansen pointed out, in my ward, we have the new Veterans Memorial coming. And I'd love to have some sort of synergy with the library system to have maybe a QR code that refers books, movies, et cetera, whatnot, to people to help bring that memorial to life. So we'll talk more offline, but I just wanted to say it for the world to hear. Love working with you, and I want to make sure that you have resources in Ward Four for my people. Thank you.
And you know, I'm a veteran as well, Councilwoman. So I do a lot of support for the veterans.
Ms. Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Watson, you're everywhere. So first, I don't know how you have the stamina and the energy to be at everything and contribute every single way you can. So I just want to say that publicly. Thank you. You are showing up for every community and cause. Another thing I wanted to say is that I think our workforce space is going to be very important heading into the future. We're hearing about lots of layoffs. We're hearing about lots of job losses. And so I think that it's going to, your graciousness in hosting a lot of the employee N B hubs out of the library space is going to be huge in making sure that our community is reconnected with employment opportunities or training or et cetera, right? There's so much to finding a new job when you're told yours doesn't exist anymore. So then I was a little, I was a little surprised that Clark County has something going on with you with their Parks and Rec Department, but the city of Las Vegas doesn't. So I just want to take the opportunity to say that we're going to make sure that we talk through possibilities of how to bolster, support our mutual work in the spaces, because we want people to know to go to you for resources. But then we also want them to know what the city has going on that's promoting reading. I know that the city of Las Vegas, we have our own reading passport program that we try to offer through our community centers. So I just want to say, I want to start that ball rolling and conversations flowing between us to between us to see how we can both lift each other's work up and be even more effective with our constituencies, our overlapping and mutual constituencies. So, thank you for everything you do and for the work that we are going to continue to accomplish in the future for our residents.
Thank you, Ms. Seaman.
Thank you so much for continuing to serve. Thank you for your service, not just in the library, but for your service as a veteran. And I'd also like to make one request, that we never turn libraries into just digital, that we keep the hard books, because I think it's so important. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Kelvin. This was a presentation only and no action is required, and we will now move to item Report by Celeste Rayford, Region Two Superintendent on the current educational operations in the schools within the Clark County School District in the city of Las Vegas. This impacts all wards. Dr. Malich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, Dr. Tammy Malich, Director of Youth Development and Social Initiatives, for the record. As you closed out the last item, I would just ask, several have requested the presentation, and we will be sending that to you as soon as this is over. And so now it brings, brings me great pleasure to introduce our Region Two School Superintendent, Associate Superintendent, Celeste Rayford, who's going to share with you the Quarter Four Report regarding the city of Las Vegas schools and the Clark County School District as required by A B four sixty-nine passed during the two thousand seventeen legislative session. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Rayford. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor Berkeley, City Council Members. Celeste Rayford, Region Two Superintendent, Clark County School District. I'm here today to share a brief update. The written report contents reflect disaggregated data that was presented to our Board of Trustees during the fourth calendar year quarter of two thousand twenty-four, October through December. Topics include proficiency and proficiency gaps, Nevada School Performance Framework, advanced coursework diversity and achievement, chronic absenteeism, and student behavior. Las Vegas trends in terms of proficiency and proficiency gaps, moderate proficiency in English Language Arts at forty-two point four percent in grades three through five, with grade three reading proficiency at forty-one percent. Notable gaps exist for ELL students as well as our students with disabilities. Proficiency for mathematics is thirty-six point eight percent, with significant gaps persisting for Black, African-American, and Hispanic-Latino students, even as those student groups do show improvements. Lower proficiency in science, particularly for elementary students, with eleven point nine percent in grade five and thirty-six percent in grade eight. Thirty-eight point five percent of schools are rated three stars or higher. In terms of advanced coursework diversity and achievement, there was strong participation for dual enrollment, particularly in STEM-related courses. The subgroup gaps are narrowing. Through disparities, those disparities persist. In terms of advanced placement, the largest AP participation in the district and the AP scores are improving across all student groups. In regards to CTE, there is broad enrollment in fields such as automotive technology, culinary arts, and cybersecurity. In terms of IB, there is moderate utilization of IB programs with potential for expansion. In terms of chronic absenteeism, the chronic absenteeism rate was nineteen point one percent, which is still higher than desired, but it is an improvement rate among the highest in the district. In terms of student discipline, there have been high rates of suspensions and expulsions, which indicate the continued need for behavior management strategies, though a notable improvement trend is evident. Regarding our celebrations, I want to acknowledge the celebrations we did here this morning in terms of K O Canusen with their Las Pumas, as well as Sunrise Acres, their flag football team and the Jaguar Cheerleaders. There are some additional celebrations. On March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, the Clark County School District participated in the statewide Nevada Moves Celebration, which highlighted the benefits of safe walking and biking to school, as well as events that promoted physical activity. There were six Clark County schools that were recognized for excelling in STEM education with designations made by the Governor's Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology. Arbor View High School and Frank F. Garcia Junior High School represented the city of Las Vegas. The other schools included were Durango High School, Elton M. and Madeleine Garrett Junior High School, Judy and John L. Gooseby Elementary School, and Carol M. Johnston STEM Academy of Environmental Studies. This concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the council members? Ms. Summers Armstrong.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rayford, for the, is it Doctor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Dr. Rayford. I've known her many years. She was Ms. Rayford when she was our kids' principal at Mabel Hogard. Still have some real concerns about the achievement gaps, and, and particularly very concerned about the student discretionary expulsions. The numbers are shocking that we have two hundred and thirty-two students expelled and one hundred and eighty-six of them were African-American or Hispanic, and I think this is more than just an issue of teacher ability to control classrooms. I think this is a deeper issue, and I would like to know what can we as leaders do to help inform this problem? I mean, this is, this is an issue, we don't need kids expelled from school, and what are, is the district doing to combat this in a manner that is helpful to the children as well as helping the teachers to better handle their classrooms?
Great question, Councilwoman Summers Armstrong. Schools are being proactive in the sense of we've got members of our Educational Service Division along with other divisions and units that are meeting with schools to come up with some plans in terms of how we can better support our students. We do want to ensure that there are consequences based on particular incidents, however, we have to ensure that there are some restorative practices where we're bringing parties together to restore and to rebuild that trust. We know that many of our schools are also educating our parents in terms of what they can do in terms of reinforcing skills and behaviors at home, based on what we're doing here at school. But again, we're tackling it. It has been brought to many of our building principals' attention, and they are working to develop plans with their leadership teams and the staff at their schools. Many of them also are conducting home visits as well, and they've got many I's additional staff on campus, because we, as we know, the more adults that we have, there's someone that they can reach out to beforehand so that we can be proactive based on an issue that might be stemming from maybe in the neighborhood. They're bringing that to the attention, and we're able to try to reach some resolution prior.
Just a quick follow-up, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Do you have quantitative data for that, that we could share in our communities? Because these are things that come up when I'm in the community about expulsion. So I know, I know it's aspirational, but I think we're many years past aspirations. And so if you have any quantitative, you know, what kinds of training are the, are these schools giving to their staff? And, and how are they addressing, you know, what manner of quantitative data can you just provide so that we can have some things to discuss in the community? I think that would be helpful.
Yes, we can give that to Dr. Malich.
Does anybody else care to comment? Yes, Ms. Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that we have a new CCSD Superintendent, Ms. Joan Ebert. I think it would be amazing to have her swing by maybe one of our city briefings. Well, we have several, but we'll figure out how we can bring her over, and she can maybe be introduced to the city council members. We do want to have as a city a very good working relationship with the Clark County School Superintendent. We feel that we are all passionate about our constituents, our residents, our children, their futures, and I think that if we can row in the same direction and be supportive of each other's efforts and initiatives, I think we gain all, we all gain to benefit from collectively harnessing every single energy that we put forth in, in making sure that we're creating pathways to successful futures for our young minds. So I just wanted to say from us, congratulate her on being selected as the next leader. It's not something that's going to be easy work. She herself is quoted saying there's a lot to do, but looking forward to her leadership and getting to have a working relationship and communication from us to her. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll take it back.
Anybody else, would anyone else care to comment? In that case, Dr. Rayford, I want, I recognize that the environment that I grew up in when I was in elementary school, middle school, and high school is dramatically different than the student population that we're dealing with now, but it makes me very, I'm very, very pleased to recognize that we, we recognize the challenges, and we're doing everything we can to make inroads so that we can educate our children so they could lead successful and fulfilling lives, and it does start in the schools. So I want to thank you on behalf of the entire city council and the citizens of the city of Las Vegas for the work that you do for our youngsters each and every day. It is not an easy task that you have, but we appreciate that you do it.
Thank you very much.
You are more than welcome, and thank you for joining us today. This is a presentation only and no action is required, so we will now move on to Agenda Item Forty. Set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abaintments.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item Forty-One, Citizens' Participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? I see a few people. Would you please join us at the podium and state your name for the record? And thank you for your patience. I know it was a long meeting.
My name is Patrick Ballinger. Do I need to spell that?
City clerk? Yes, why don't you spell it?
B is in boy, A is in apple, L is in Larry, L is a Larry, I, N is a Nancy, G E R.
And I'm Ryan Moon.
Would you, Moon?
Moon.
Okay.
And we're with the Las Vegas Area Council, Scouting America, and we're here to do a presentation for Councilwoman Bruni.
All right, please proceed.
Councilwoman Bruni's dedication to the Las Vegas Area Council extends far beyond simple support. She has been insurmountal in securing Floyd Lam Park for our annual Scout Expo, and that has been transformative. This generous allocation provides exceptional setting for our scouting families, facilitating camping activities, and enriching the overall experience. Furthermore, the expansive space allows our older scouts to participate in a vast array of merit badges, classes, offering unparalleled opportunities for growth and development. Her efforts have been, have enriched the lives of numerous scouts and their families. Beyond her commitment to scouts, Councilwoman Bruni's impact in Las Vegas is equally profound, with her leadership, leadership extends to many vital organizations and significant contributions to the Kenny Gwynne Center for Policies and the Desert Research Institute and various other civic educational boards. This wealth of experience and dedication to policy and research, commitment to improvement, commendable through her deep-rooted understanding of the city's workings, has helped us navigate various challenges and open pathways for collaboration. Councilwoman Bruni, we just wanted to present this to you. It's our North Star Award, and it's, it's, it's the, it's the highest award we can, we can bestow upon somebody that's not registered in scouting.
Councilwoman Bruni, would you like to go down and accept your award? Mr. Ballinger, Mr. Moon, thank you so much for presenting this very well-deserved recognition to one of our city council members. Councilwoman Bruni, would you please say a few words?
Well, I was just gonna say, I did not know this was gonna happen. If I had known, I probably would have asked them not to come, because I do not like surprises. But I will say, you guys are incredible partners. You always show up when we have projects, and you're helping us take care of Floyd Lam Park and really building the next generation of leaders who I hope will serve up here with us someday. So thank you all for what you do, and I look forward to the continued collaboration and partnership.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we're very happy that you did come and she didn't know. We will now move to Agenda Item.
You got another public comment?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Please join us.
I'm the invisible man. Look at me, forget about me.
Not in the least.
Okay. Hello, ladies and gentlemen.
And let me set the time at two minutes. Go right ahead.
I am Eric Nochesidek Christ Nimrod. You can find Nochesidek in Hebrews the seventh chapter. I'm aware of the Armenian genocide. For a long time, I was doing a lot of research with the Kardashians, because they are Armenian also. And also, I love my library, and the Black student situation, I feel is more of a spiritual problem than anything else. But be that as it may, there's been a cut in the Interagency Council on Homelessness and the Institute of Museum and Library Services. That's just been cut. I don't know what that's gonna do for us here, but I hope, hopefully not. The courtyard shelter needs sleeping mat, needs a sleeping mat area. The sleeping mat area needs to be cleaned more often. Dear Mayor Shelley and the rest of the city council, you are great. All of you keep Las Vegas the most outstanding city in the state. Your attention to detail with your amazing teams encourages the world to hold Las Vegas in high esteem. Thanks to all of you for your loving care. A city council like you is extremely rare.
Thank you so very, very much. We'll now move, oh, yes, please join us. Would you please state your name for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
That's fine. So I will spell my name out. Muyang, M U Y A N G, middle name Bonnie, B O N I, last name Fominian, F is in Friday, O M I N Y E N. Okay, two minutes. So I today come forward as a homeless person, so I guess that's a theme today. So I am having some issues at the homeless courtyard, and I've done my research, and I did come down here today because I see that it is funded by the city of Las Vegas and also the mayor's fund. So I don't really know where to go from here with these issues I'm having. Nothing I have to say today is gonna be pleasant. I have decided at this time I'm going to sue the city of Las Vegas and the allied security. I've looked into your background, Mayor. I understand that you are or were an attorney at one time, so I'm not gonna sit here and say that- and say that I'm going to do pro se because that's all I can afford to do. But I've had two different instances with allied security guards walking into me in the bathroom. I have gone, I have reported it, and nothing has changed. So for some reason, people think because we're homeless, they can treat us any way they want to, and I guess I'm here for transparency. And the only way for me to get that video footage, to put it out into the public consciousness, is to go ahead and move forward with a suit against the city. So obviously, I know you cannot respond to that, but I did speak to somebody, I believe, Ashley Straight or something maybe last week, and I went to track down Joslyn, but at this point in time, I'm kind of done waiting. So I just kind of feel like the courtyard, lots of bad things happened there, and I don't really think it's fair for the city to pass ordinances and expect more healthy people to be surrounded by less healthy people all the time. I don't think low-barrier shelters are beneficial for anybody. I think if you put a bunch of sick people together, all you get is more sickness. And that's all I have to say today. Thank you for your time.
I thank you very much. Saber, could you have one of your team have a conversation? Agenda Item Number 42, Council Emerging Issues. Let's have a discussion regarding potential items for future City Council agendas. This involves all wards. Any discussion must be limited to whether or not such proposed items shall be placed on a future agenda, and no discussion regarding the substance of any proposed topic shall occur. No action shall be taken. Do any members of our council have any topics they would like to bring forward under this Seeing none, I thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next agenda item. Agenda Item 43, Council Members' Recognition. Comments made by individual City Council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the City Council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Shall we start with Councilwoman Bruni?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I truly appreciated the ceremonials this morning. It was a wonderful way to start the day and our meeting with so much positivity and the celebration of who we are as a city and a community. I think it's clear that there is so much good stuff happening, from successful college and elementary school athletes, young students who are successfully celebrating their culture, and individuals who have dedicated their lives to advancing their community. Last week, I joined several of my colleagues as we attended North Las Vegas' State of the City. Congratulations to Mayor Goins Brown and the council for all of the amazing projects and activities that are happening in North Las Vegas. You are definitely moving at the speed of business. Last Wednesday, I had the pleasure of attending a mid-lent lunch at Saint Garabet Armenian Church. It was a pleasure to break bread with Andy Armenian, our Citizen of the Month, and other members of the Armenian Church. Thank you for your warmth and hospitality. Last Wednesday evening, we hosted our quarterly Community Connections, where we discussed all thing HOAs with our own city attorney, Jeff Dorkak, the Nevada State Ombudsman, Sonia Meriwether, and several current HOA board members. It was a great conversation, and special thank you to Jeff Dorkak, our city attorney, who was in the hot seat on a few questions and handled them with tremendous diplomacy and grace. So thank you, Jeff. This week, several of our city team members had the opportunity to tour Goodman Plaza. All I can say is that it is beautiful, and it is going to be such a resource for our community, and I'm excited about all the space that will be available to celebrate art and culture. Moving onward to future events. Next Thursday, we'll be hosting our monthly Bogaditos with Bruni from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at our Centennial Hills Satellite Office. On April 19th, hop on over to our annual Spring Fling Pet Parade and Classic Car Show. We'll have something for everyone, including pet adoptions, with some of our rescue partners. If you're interested in being a community or arts and craft vendor, please reach out to our office at 702-229-5463. Also on April 19th, The Carpenters are hosting a Building Better Futures career check-in or career meeting with parents, juniors, and seniors. If you're interested in exploring a career in the trades, specifically the carpenters, please stop by. On Wednesday, April 23rd, we'll be hosting our regular free breakfast for small businesses. This will take place at 8:30 a.m. at the Centennial Hills Active Adult Center. We have a growing list of resources and speakers, so you will not want to miss out. Please RSVP so that we have enough food. Last time, we had yummy breakfast tacos. As many know, our northwest neighbors love our dark skies, so we're taking advantage of this. On Friday, April 25th, we'll be hosting a Night Among the Stars at Floyd Lam Park. We'll be taking a walk around the park and looking at stars. An expert from the Las Vegas Astronomical Society will be joining us to give us a guided tour of the stars and dark skies. We love hearing from you, even when you have tough questions for us. Please email us at ward6@lasvegasnevada.gov or call us at 702-229-5463. Have a great week.
Thank you so much. Ms. Seaman.
Thank you. So it's been a great Women's History Month, and I really enjoyed the collaboration event, joining Don Barnes and Lisa Patterson for a fireside chat at the Women's History Month Collaboration Event with NAWIC Las Vegas and WTS. The keynote was Dr. Braxton, and she was truly amazing. And so it's been a pleasure to celebrate women every day last month. Our Breakfast Buzz, we had another successful Breakfast Buzz and Ward Two Biz connecting with constituents. A special thanks to City Marshal Lieutenant Paul Hartz, Marshal Patino, and Marshal Norris with the City of Las Vegas for an excellent presentation of our city drones. And a special thanks to Captain Greg Fennis of the LVMPP Summerlin Air Command for answering all the public safety inquiries. We had an amazing trip with Seth Floyd, our Director of Community Development, in Washington, DC, opening doors and supporting the lands bill by our Congressman Mark Amade and Susie Lee. We also had great meetings at the White House with officials to talk about how they are so excited about releasing BLM lands, and we talked about autonomy and a pathway to get that land so much easier than we've had in the past. So it was a very, very, so we ran into old friends, Senator Dean Heller, Congressman, our former Congressman Porter, thank you, and Congressman Heck. We also ran into Congressman Heck. Walk for Friendship Event, the Seventh Annual Walk for Friendship Event, right there in Ward Two at our Las Vegas Sports Park. I was only kidding, Mayor Pro Tem. We both have wonderful wards when we were joking about best wards. The Friendship Circle, a nonprofit, supports individuals with special needs, so I'm so excited that we were a part of their Seventh Annual Walk for Friendship. I had the privilege of recognizing our Nevada Desert Mermaids Artistic Swimming Program at our pavilion pool. I also recognized our 2025 Nevada Desert Mermaid Athlete of the Year, Olivia Brady, for her dedication, leadership, and excellence in synchronized swimming. Upcoming events in Ward Two, we'd like to invite you to our Art in the Park at Bruce Trent Park and our next Ward Two Breakfast Buzz and Ward Two Biz. That will be on April 12th. The Art in the Park will be April 5th from 10:00 to 4:00. We have food trucks. We also have jazz in the park, so it's a great event. We hope you'll all come out. Our adoptive pets this month are Bear, he's a husky Pomeranian male, 34.6 pounds, about a year and six months, and we have Moshe. Moshe is very interesting because she has extra toes. Instead of her regular paws, she has an extra toe on her paws. She's a female, 6.3 pounds. She's about 10 months old. She's absolutely gorgeous. If you have any issues or concerns, we ask that you, oh, wait, let's first do this. Do you want to get the word out about your Ward Two business and be a part of our Small Business Saturdays? Just contact my ward at 702-229-2420, or you can email at ward2@lasvegasnevada.gov. If you have any issues or concerns in Ward Two, you can use the same phone number and email, and if you're not sure what ward you're in, we will direct you to the proper ward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Saturday, March 22nd, First Friday Foundation hosted the Third Annual Art U OK Free Art and Resource Fair out of our historic Fifth Street School. The event is set up to support mental health and self-care awareness in our community, and doing this through the arts and live music is a great avenue, and it was a fun and amazing event. Residents of all ages enjoyed music, workshops, and learning of so many services available to them. On Tuesday, March 25th, we invited the community out for a free donut and a free pub cup at our Freedom Park on the 25th. So thank you to our Department of Public Safety for organizing this event. We had the support of the Latino Peace Officers Association, obviously, our Protective Animals Services community. We had the Animal Foundation issuing tags for our furry friends, and we also had our fire crew out there greeting our residents, and everybody had a lovely time. It was a beautiful day. On March 29th, this past Saturday, we had the grand opening of Los West Coast, and I was thrilled to welcome them into the Arts District on Commerce. Congratulations to Leslie Castillo and her husband, Dan Garvey, and their beautiful family on making their dream of opening a clothing store come true. Check them out at 1415 South Commerce Street, Suite 140. The mayor and I just, this past Monday, had a wonderful tour of Area 15 with Winston Fisher. We got to see the evolution of Area 15. It has just continued to expand and grow and change and morph, and we can't wait to see the future of the Area 15, Area District Two come to ribbon-cutting sometime in the fall, August or September. So just want to thank all the fabulous Area 15 staff that made that tour a remarkable experience, and the future is looking bright as well. Just want to put on your radar, we have a free workshop for artists. It's happening tomorrow, Thursday, April 3rd, 5:30 to 7:00, at our historic Fifth Street School, 401 South Ford Street. And this meeting will explore the importance of written contracts, the basics of creating a valid contract, and when to seek professional help versus doing it yourself. The class is presented by student attorneys Danny Baldwin and Lilian Zee from the Economic Justice and Small Business Clinic at UNLV's William Boyd School of Law. So I love the community giving back to our community. We also have the Green Businesses Networking and Training Opportunity happening here Thursday, April 10th, 11:00 to 2:00. It's a lunch, and lunch will be provided. You can stop by the multipurpose room of the East Las Vegas Community Center, 250 Northeastern, Eastern and Stewart. The QR code is there to sign up, and so basically, it's an informational training sponsored by GreenUp and the City of Las Vegas, where we're going to feature speakers from monarca groups specializing in multicultural engagement with Latino communities. So we want small business owners looking for ways to cut costs, reduce waste, and run a more effective business. The other flyer is about EV chargers. So how do you qualify for getting some of these chargers? Register for Green Business Certification, meet with your Green Business Advisor, complete or verify Green Biz Checklist in 60 days. So we invite you to come and also participate in that. I think it's the same event. I'm going to skip the next slide because Councilwoman Bruni did an amazing job. It's again with our brothers and sisters at The Carpenters, and they do this annual event with juniors and seniors. I wish I would have at least known that the trades were a possibility when I was a senior or a junior in school, because they do offer amazing career opportunities to our community. And sometimes, the parents also sign up for some of their trade programs, so sometimes it's a benefit to another family member. So I hope families really take up this opportunity and assist. The LVCBA is hosting a shredding event on April 25th in fabulous Ward Three, right there in their headquarters offices, 857 Northeastern Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. I know we all have a lot of different documents we need to get rid of, especially after tax season coming up on April 15th. So the shredding event is on the 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., so 9:00 to noon on Friday, the 25th. Take note of that. I know I probably will take advantage of that opportunity. And that's it for me, Mayor. I hope that everyone who needs some assistance in Ward Three can always feel free to call us or drop us an email at ward3@lasvegasnevada.gov.
Thank you so much. Ms. Diaz. Mayor Pro Tem, would you care to share with us?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Today, let's see, this month of April is dedicated to National Pickleball Month. The celebration now includes over 4.8 million participants. I have never played pickleball, so I'm like one of the few people that have never played it before. I don't get it.
Councilwoman Bruni can teach you.
My Parks Commissioner is an avid pickleball player and is on the board of pickleball nationally, but it's not my thing. So go forth and pickle. And it is World Autism Awareness Day. April 2nd celebrates World Autism Awareness Day. This is a complex disorder, and there's a number of research programs going on that's raising awareness, and teachers and caregivers and parents should take the time to understand what it is, how it is, how it affects us, because research is advancing every day. So take the time to understand what this disorder is. And happening in Ward One this weekend is a free early childhood screening event hosted First Five Nevada at the College of Southern Nevada's Charleston Campus. This is a free, free is very important, health developmental and behavioral screening with onsite referrals to programs and services. Incredibly important, if you have a young one, it's, getting him screened is helpful. And sign up at firstfivenevada.org, and walk-ins are welcome if space is available. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem. Ms. Alan Polanski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On my first slide, you'll see the rock star of Mayor Goins Brown, who did a great job at her State of the City. Just want to point out, our own rock star, Mayor Berkeley, will be hosting us in our State of the City address. That's on the 30th of this month at the Smith Center. On Saturday, for the first time, I hosted a children's fair at Wayne Bunker Park. It was a fun day, and I had the opportunity to meet young entrepreneurs Tristan and Byron. Their 3D printing business was incredible. I even bought a few items myself, and that's Tristan in the blue t-shirt happily branding his first $100 transaction that I was proud to support. The musical talent and the DJ really made this first-time event very special. And lastly, on this side, I attended this past Saturday Mountain Ridge Little League's Opening Day. The opening day of baseball is my favorite day of the year, and I would like to note that Mountain Ridge Little League won the World Series of Baseball 10 years ago, and they are the pride of the northwest part of our valley. As a baseball mom, I'm always happy to show up and support these young athletes. Next up, parents, are you looking for fun this spring break to take your kids to? Head over to Durango Hills YMCA on Saturday, April 12th, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. for egg hunt and games for your family. You can register at the Durango YMCA or on the QR provided in the slide. Please join me on Friday, April 25th, for a movie in the park, where we'll be viewing the movie Secret Life of Pets 2, Triangle Hills Park. We'll have snow cones, popcorn, pet-themed activities, food trucks for purchase, and this is in conjunction with our DPS folks. The fun starts at 6:00 p.m., so bring out your chairs and blankets for this free, family-friendly event. And lastly, do you have any information regarding the 14 missing teens featured on this slide? If so, please call Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department Missing Person Detail at 702-828-3111 to at-risk youth and runaways. There is always a free bus ride ticket home. Please call. Lastly, really lastly, stay connected with us on our social media platforms or contact us directly the old-fashioned way at 702-229-2524. We are always here and happy to provide any assistance that we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Somers Armstrong.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this time.
Not anymore. Not anymore.
Well, is it after... Oh, it is afternoon. All right. Well, I'm going to wrap up. Here we go. I don't understand pickleball either. I'm a tennis player, or used to be. People are telling me that I should try it, but I don't know. I'm not there yet, but maybe eventually. So, we'll start with things that... Wonderful things that happened in Ward Five during the month. We had a groundbreaking on March 12th at the Duncan and Edwards Affordable Housing Development, which is in Ward Five. This project is slated for completion in April of 2026, and the project will include 80 apartments in six two-story buildings. They'll have a clubhouse, high-quality amenities. I'm so glad, if you see in the middle picture, that Mayor Berkeley was there, my fellow Councilwoman Brune was there to attend the ceremony, and we are so excited that affordable housing is coming to Ward Five. And this was a project in collaboration with the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority. Have to give them their props. They had this land for probably 20 years, and it has taken them this long to work with the Michael Foundation, I believe it is, to get this going. So, we're really excited for this. All right, next slide. On, let's see, I think this was last Saturday. I'm like losing my days. On March 22nd, there was a cleaning, a spring cleaning event that was also in collaboration with the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority. I had staff out there. My husband was out there. Jennifer from Councilwoman Bruni's office was also out there. We were working with volunteers to just freshen and spruce things up in marble manner, prepping people who are going to be moving out as that development gets underway. It was a beautiful day, and we got a lot of work done. Next slide, please. We had a faith leaders development summit last Friday here at the Now Cafe. We reached out to faith leaders all throughout Ward Five and invited them to this event so that they could receive information from the national organization called Enterprise. They did a wonderful presentation. We had local experts in affordable housing to come out and talk to these faith leaders about how they can develop their underutilized land for affordable housing or to create vital community spaces. We are thrilled. We are following up from our survey and hope to have another event coming soon. Next slide. So, we have some fun upcoming events. Our Spring Festival at Sammy Davis Junior Festival Plaza on April 5th, celebrating Japanese culture. We're going to have a tea ceremony, calligraphy, origami, and all kinds of fun stuff. Come out and immerse yourself in Japanese culture, and we are excited for this event. Next. There is a car show happening on April 5th this Saturday at Doolittle, and an Easter Egg Hunt. So, please come out and check out some cool cars. Enjoy the Easter Egg Hunt. It's a family-friendly event, and it's going to be a lot of fun on Saturday. Hopefully, the wind will die down, and our allergies can sort of settle down. I'm still suffering a bit. And finally, oh, not finally, we also are having a Earth Day cleanup at 6208 Yerba Lane. Meet us by the gate. All supplies will be provided, and we're going to do a little more spring cleaning and sprucing up in one of our neighborhoods near Lake Mead and Jones. And I'm hoping that folks will come out and meet their neighbors, and let's help one another get ready for a beautiful, clean spring in Las Vegas. And finally, I believe, yes. Here's the contact information from our office. Please reach us by phone at (702) 229-5443, or if you would prefer to send an email, we are at ward5@lasveganavada.gov. We are here to support our community, answer your questions, and help out in any way that we can. Thank you.
And thank you so much. And now, this meeting of our city council is now adjourned.